I just learned one of the cities. This regular session of the Red Oak City Council, the order Monday, April twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, five thirty P M. Here at the Red Oak Fire Station located at nineteen oh four North Broadway. Just a reminder, these meetings are being recorded and are available on our YouTube channel. Oh invocation by Pastor Kevin Berry of River of Light Church.
Father, we thank you so very much for this beautiful day that we have to meet here today. We're asking first and foremost, we invite you here that your presence be felt, that your wisdom be granted, and that your, that the peace that you have called us to will be felt here. We ask that the decisions and things that are said and done be honoring to you, and that our community can grow and mature and be a light to our state and our country. Or please, 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 please be here, be felt, and help us to honor you. We love you and we thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Brian Billson, this is a pledge.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Ashley?
Bradley.
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Fredo?
Here.
Isaac?
Right.
Ebrink?
Here.
Number five is the approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
For a second, then we can discuss. Okay. Does anyone prefer to have a couple of our audience members here with regard to the tree excavation? And any of those items, would you like to move those sooner in the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move number seventeen, number twenty four after number nine on the agenda.
Okay. Do you amend the motion now?
I don't need to. I guess, yeah, I don't, yeah, I'll amend the motion to approve the items to be changed.
Okay, so a motion is to move agenda items seventeen and twenty four under or behind number nine.
And I'll second that motion with those amendments.
Okay.
Roll call.
Bill?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yeah.
Ebrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number six is proclamation or special notices. We do have a proclamation proclamation regarding Arbor Day and Tree City USA. Whereas in eighteen seventy two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life, giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a resource of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Shauna Silvius, Mayor of the City of Red Oak, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five, as Arbor Day in the City of Red Oak. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I furthermore, and I further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Um dated this April twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. I just need an original one to sign for him, and then a picture of that. I think Bill needs it for something with Arbor Day Farm, Arbor Day. So we'll do that. Um I did talk to Bill, and we are planting trees on Friday, this Friday. I'm waiting on the time, but it sounds like we're gonna start at the Big Wilson and then move to the cemetery. So we'll be planting a few trees. I don't know what's on yet. I haven't had a chance to check my emails since a little bit ago. All right. Number seven, public comments, three-minute limit, and you must sign in in the front door to speak.
You have a comment.
Okay, do we have any online? Okay. Number eight, consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the city council meeting on four, seven, twenty five. And liquor licenses for two five-day slush up and drink LLC from April twenty third to the twenty seventh. And getting slushed south of thirty five LLC, May fifth through the ninth.
Move to approve.
Fredo?
I don't even know who these people are.
They've, they've done it the last few years, so I'll second. Okay, Bradley? Roll call. Fredo?
Yes.
Isaac?
No, because I don't know who they are.
Well, they're in your package on, on pages seven, eight, and nine.
Well, still does not tell me who they are.
So what information would you like in the future?
I'd like to know just exactly who they are. There's several names missing here, but it's, to me, it's all goddamn great.
Well, I think the key is that we take whatever the state gives us for information, unless we're gonna have a separate application to be able to gather information in addition to what the state portal gives us. It shows you what their LLC is. It says that they're from, uh in one case, Hinton. So we would have to somehow create. And the other one's from Norwalk, but we'd have to be able to do something. Like, we don't have access to anything other than what the state gives us. Because it's a state-run liquor license that we just have a local authority approval for. So I understand you might want more, but I guess this is what we get. We're giving you right in the packet, the print-off from the state's portal. And the chief has approved them as well. Police chief.
Aren't they even at the fair? Don't they come to the fair and have a booth and some things on too?
And some different events at the.
That we've had down in town.
Fairground.
The Simmons House.
Yes, that's it. Okay. So roll call. Yep. Ebrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Number nine, April twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, city claims and the March two thousand and twenty five warrants.
I'll move to approve.
Bills?
Second. And that, and that, after that second, I just wanna say, I just truly, I've said before, I truly appreciate the way this is being presented now. I can make sense of what's going on with our expenses. Thank you so much.
These reports are much better out of the new system, much better.
Yes, I agree too. These numbers are not divided before. Now they're divided between the separate entities. So I think that really helps us understand where the money's going.
Yeah, it helps. And if, being like by department, I, it makes sense that way.
Yeah, it does, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I have a first by Bill, second by Fredo, roll call. Isaac?
No, I haven't seen a financial report yet.
Ebrink?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Okay, now we're gonna insert number seventeen, which is resolution two thousand and twenty five dash forty-two. This is to close Reed Street, east of Fourth Street, for mural painting. Approximately May eighteenth, uh depending on the weather and you wanna. So I did update the resolution that I emailed you just with a giving them a little more flexibility so that the artist gets their previous mural done sooner, that they can come. Obviously, they need to, most important would be that uh Bill is letting us know when they're coming so that we can get the street department to deliver the barricades. Uh he's gonna work on the pressure washing, and then there's like a, you have to whitewash it with paint for the background. Bill's here if you have any questions. Otherwise, it's just that one amendment to the resolution. This is your north wall of your building, right? It'll be on the south side.
On Reed Street side.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah, after seeing how long it took to do the, the one on, uh should be done in Maxton's building, I'm surprised it was so quick to get yours done.
Um different artists, and we've been working on this for, since before the other art evening started.
I see.
We're working on two thousand and twenty six. As we're doing this one, we're working on two buildings for two thousand and twenty six.
Already got the funds?
Need, and I, we will take all the funds you will gladly pass. All right.
All right, thank you, Bill. And you've already started wa, or washing down the walls, you.
I know. Power wash will start this week. Primer will be next week.
Okay. So the key would be, would be closed just when they're projecting off. They have to be more out to get the outline of it. And then we would close off the parking stalls just immediately adjacent to the wall during the course of the painting and all of that.
So you use like a projector or something onto it? Yeah, so she is a projector. That's why I want to close it. Gotcha. So she can, she's probably gonna be in the middle of the street with a projector.
Okay.
So that.
And that doesn't happen that night.
That, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Uh when you're doing the power washing, does that need to be closed on?
You don't need to close the street, but all, how about the parking is, the parking is the part that we really need.
So probably just leave barricades for the duration once you start. You know, you know, like if you're out there and whatever you need to do. And you'd like the sidewalk closed as well, I recall. We'll make sure you get enough barricades if it's approved.
All right.
This is awesome. Thank you for your contributions, Bill. All right.
I move to approve.
Okay, Fredo?
I'll second.
Ebrink? Roll call. Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yeah.
Ebrink?
Yes.
Okay, number twenty four is discussion of possible tree contractor licensing ordinance. So obviously, uh right now, we don't have an ordinance that requires our tree cutting firms that either are working on our trees or in private uh lands, but oftentimes, even if it's a tree that's in somebody's yard, depending on how they're working on it, it can you know, affect the right-of-way. And so through various discussions that I've had with a couple of the, you know, obviously, we use Green Tree the most. There's other people interested in bidding, which, you know, is best to do that. And I don't think any of the um, any of the contractors in town object to that process. We just wanna make sure that everything is treated equally. And so it seemed that it made more sense before talking about who's gonna do the work for the city that we first say, just like we um license other types of contractors, that we would have a code that would say, all right, the first thing that you're gonna do is we're gonna do tree work in our community, get a license, and then from there, obviously, anybody that's licensed could then bid on our work. If it's an emergency, we'll probably have rules that, uh if you wanna be one of our emergency contractors, here's the rules, which wouldn't necessarily be in the code, but you have to be available right now in the middle of a storm, show up. If you're available in that regard, then you can be on some sort of a rotation to come and help us. Otherwise, if it's just regular trees that we need cut in the cemetery where it's, you know, less of a timing issue, then again, you'd still have to be licensed with us to be able to do the work, bid on the work, so. I know that Scott and Kerry and Justin, I think T J was coming, but I did send the packet to all three of the companies that have been in conversation with me so that they had a chance to review it. Um T J just said that he was supportive. I know Justin had the idea that when we get to the part where everybody would fill out their forms, which isn't really part of this discussion, but a good point, that you'd have their contractor number on there, things like that, really. I don't know if Scott and Kerry had anything, but.
So are we talking about just for doing work for us as a municipality, or are we talking about doing work within the city limits?
I think we should say if you're doing work in the city, you get a license.
So does that mean if I wanna go help out my friend and take down one of their trees, that I have to have a license to do that?
I mean, I, we probably can't get that extreme, but if you're gonna be doing things in the right-of-way, and you're gonna tip a tree under our road, that's gonna.
Well, the right-of-way, that's a different story then. Because you're talking about city-owned property.
I think, are you talking about companies that do it for, as their business?
Like a for-profit?
For.
If you're just helping.
Not by individuals.
What if I'm a handyman, and I'm charging somebody to take down part of their tree?
Well, then.
So the key. First of all, do we, like, we don't normally have public comments, so if you guys want input from the contractors, you need to just.
Go ahead, Scott.
Uh.
I would say come up to the podium. Come up to the podium and just state your name and address, please. I should have done that for Bill too.
Um Scott Wilson with the Green Tree Company, uh eighteen, nineteen, two hundred and forty, the street, Red Oak. Um when you come to that, everybody has different ordinance, but this, this is what the big thing is with most of these guys running around. I mean, everybody's like, well, he's higher, he's low. Well, insurance is a big, big factor in this, and it doesn't matter, and I, and I don't think this is out of context, but I don't, it don't matter if it's trees, lawn, what you're doing. You're, you're crossing the city right-of-way to load that brush, drive across the city right-of-way. So every other town, not every town, will back up. A lot of communities, a lot of towns, they make you have workers comp. Obviously, that's a, that's a state law. They make you have uh commercial liability insurance, and then uh vehicle liability insurance, and then in marine. A lot of people don't know what in-marine insurance is, and what in-marine insurance is, is if I park my stump grinder on Seventh Valley, and it jumps the chocks, and it rolls down and smashes one of your guys' houses, it not only covers my stump grinder, but it covers that house. That doesn't go on your liability. So it's one more, you know, limitation in insurance that I myself have been paying for many years, and, well, you know, those rules, and so I, I think it's only right that everybody has an insurance. If you wanna, I'd, I'd say if someone wants to cut a tree down in the backyard, I, I'd say you're almost stuck to be able to cut it down, but getting it out of there, you know, if it's on the right-of-way, it's kind of a liability in the city.
You know, and I appreciate everything you're saying, and once again, you know, if it's somebody doing it for, you know, for a business, and they're making money doing it, that's one thing, but, you know, I mean, I've got chainsaws. If I had a tree in my backyard, which I don't, and I wanted to drop it, I feel like I should be able to do that without having to go to the city and, you know, prove, you know, and I don't, if I don't have a certain amount of employees and blah blah blah.
But if you don't know what you're doing, and then you drop your tree.
If it's on my property, that should be up to me whether or not I know what I'm doing. Shouldn't be up to the city to tell me whether or not I do.
But if it's gonna affect the city property.
Once again, I'm not talking about when it's in the city right-of-way.
No, but it falls. Like, nobody can isolate their tree to just their little bubble that the tree is on, even if it's on private.
Another, another thing I want to bring to your attention, as you're talking about this, so have you ever heard of the Z one thirty-three standard? So the Z thirty, one thirty-three standard is, it's a Sarosia standard. And it, it covers all OSHA laws. Um, you're Matt, and Matt, uh, been approached since, what they call Matt, and so Matt, you know, managed pro, approached distance. I gave some release. Is what that is, is this will run into, um this tree service is coming in for individuals with no insurance that's a fly-by-night. They have no insurance. Um they're cut by power lines, but you've gotta be certified to cut around power lines. I mean, for a service drop, and then it does not just tree guys, and when it comes down to it, let's say it's rougher. You can't be within ten foot of that service drop. My managed approach distance, avoid contact. And the bigger the voltage, the further the distance. And maybe I should bring in and drop the books off to you guys for Z one thirty-three, so everybody understands that. And the only reason I'm bringing it up is I spent a lot of money every year to certify all these guys to do it right, and pay the insurance for it, and I just wanna make sure it's apples to apples, and everybody's on the same page, so.
And once again, I'm not talking about people that are doing it, you know, for a paycheck. Just talking about homeowners.
Sure, I mean.
But I think if you have your buddy come over, that's one thing, but if you're paying somebody, they really should.
That's not what I'm talking about. That's not what I'm talking about. I just don't wanna say, think that we're restricting homeowners or landowners on their own property. So that, that doesn't seem right to me.
If you look, I guess if it affects other people. We always say that our codes are all good. Like, what did we learn in the downtown assessment?
Once again, I'm not talking about in the right-of-way or.
Right, but what I'm saying.
Tree trees.
But, but most things that happen on private property, when it's a fifty-foot tree, it affects other people. Like, you're not just putting it in your little bubble. So if you look at this Evansdale, it talks about you need a license if it's at least thirty feet. So a little tiny tree that isn't really gonna hurt anybody has a smaller standard, then this is where you do that. And then this thing.
Been answered, okay.
And it includes in this code that if it's unrighted.
Example, I got a sixty-foot tree in my backyard. Unless you fall it south across the street. I don't care which way it falls. Other than that, it's landing on my property, which means that you have no right to tell me how to do it.
I think Scott's point was, is that everything that you do eventually has to come out on our street. And why wouldn't we just want people to be licensed so we know that they're doing it safely?
Well, I mean, you know, you don't have to be licensed to do your own plumbing work. You don't have to be licensed to do your own electrical work, even though you have to be licensed to do someone else's. It's kind of the same thing.
Up to the council.
Then you have me asking questions because in Nebraska, the city.
Well, this, one of the exemptions in here just flat out says it, an exemption is any person with reference to trees on said person's own premises. So doesn't that exempt me if I wanna go knock a tree over my backyard then? Seems like it.
Right, but if you're gonna go hire somebody.
Right, I'm not arguing that, but what, to John's point, he's saying that we shouldn't tell him what to do in his backyard. This exempts him from this ordinance.
Right, if you're doing your own tree.
If you're doing your own tree, you're exempt. So I think that should answer any question there.
I think we should only license legitimate businesses.
If it's a for-profit company that's advertising, they're gonna cut trees.
Their major purpose to their business is tree removal.
No problem with that.
I've, I've got a problem with this in a respect, and it looks like we're heading down the road. It's not gonna matter what business there is in Red Oak. We're gonna force you to have a permit or a license in order to open your door, and that isn't right.
Well, you do have to have a business license to operate any business in the city.
But that does not mean the city has a right to license you again.
I don't think we have a business license. We do not.
No, none, no.
Well, it would be the same respect. You're gonna, you're gonna ask a business to get a permit or a license to do their, their business. And that, that is, that is not apples and oranges. That is just plain old watermelon stowed on the street.
Well, I think the reason that in this case it's different than if you have a clothing shop or a gift store, like, your business doesn't affect our world. When you're dropping trees in the street, when you're in power lines, you're in utility space. You can be stump grinding right into a pipe.
What I'm saying is you're picking and choosing on who you're, you're enforcing this on. If you're enforcing on one, you should enforce it on all.
Well, what I'm saying is we're not picking and choosing randomly. In this case, we're picking and choosing for who affects city land, city equip, uh city property, potentially.
And we do that for plumbers and stuff too. You know, we require them to have a million-dollar liability policy to dig in and right-of-way and all that stuff, so we do require things from other vendors.
If what you do, you know.
Well, I'm gonna go back to Mr. Bill's here. So you're, you're gonna drop a tree in your yard, there's a power line. So you call the power company, is the power gunning company going to drop those lines down for you to drop that tree?
Of course not.
So that goes back to why you probably wouldn't wanna hire someone to do it.
My questions were answered. I'm, I'm on board, so.
Okay, yeah.
So again, it's kind of two phases. It's making sure that we, if we wanna do something, to make sure that everybody is insured before we also hire people to do our own work. Because we obviously spend thousands of dollars every year to have trees. You know, we bought the bucket truck, so there's a lot of things that we can now do ourselves. But there's just some that are either too big for our guys to reach, you know, from a height perspective, but our bucket truck isn't as tall as uh what the private contractors have. Um it might be in a precarious spot where we don't feel comfortable with how we're gonna drop it. So I think like Scott, I think you did some backyard ones that were just in a tight spot where we may be hiring for that reason too.
And I know he's got equipment to go in in our parks without tearing up the grounds and stuff and get the work done too, which is nice.
So I guess to the point of like when we said that we were gonna license sanitation companies, that that would prevent some of these small guys from picking up people's trash for five bucks a pop when it's hurting our legitimate businesses in town. I think that would be the same thing for our tree services here in town. Why, if a storm comes through here, would we want these fly-by-night companies coming in here that aren't properly insured taking trees out in a shoddy manner that could potentially damage things?
So they might think twice.
Professionals that are here locally that are willing to step up and do that. So to me, that just makes sense to follow the same suit on that.
I assume, you used to be on the park and tree board, right? We don't have any rules that when you go to remove a tree that you have to get permission, do you?
Well, if it's a street tree, then city is responsible for it. But as far as trees in your yard, the only thing that I think that we dictate is if it hangs over into the public right-of-way, we require them to cut it back, and then uh if it's dead, we require them to remove it. But other than that, I don't think we have any.
Tree that is growing into a power line or damaged by a power line, the power companies will come and.
Power companies take care of that, but they just tear the trees up in the process.
Well, but if you can't afford to go clean the tree, that's better than you trying to do it yourself.
Part of this also was that we've had some situations with these private contractors where somebody just wants their tree taken down, even though it's in the boulevard in our right-of-way. Um and I know that we don't really have a process right now to be able to say, you know, we're giving you our permission, but if you want it done quicker and you're willing to pay the contractors to do it, why would we be opposed? But they should at least get permission from us, so. And some of it, like one of the codes, I think, said, like, you just have to, you have to get permission to take a tree down because part of it is the danger, like. It's not. There are cities that say they can declare your trees dangerous and make you take it down and things like that, so. So I guess the question for tonight is just, do we wanna bring back a code? Are we in support of licensing them? And then at the next meeting, we can have what our details are and what you wanna have for a license and just making, I assume everybody wants to have, like Scott said, and Justin, you said the same, like liability, work comp, um vehicle, and then the in-marine. Where they would just provide that to us in order to be licensed.
And Justin, that's, that's unreasonable to you?
Yeah.
And T J said the same when he responded. And then once everybody be licensed, then we know that they're on the playing field if they wanna do work for us. We could just simply say that in order for you to bid on our work, you have to be licensed.
So I wanna back up. So I, I could have swore I read somewhere that you had to be licensed to do business in the city of Red Oak. You had to receive a business license from the city hall. I just swore I read that somewhere. But I thought it was in our code, but maybe not. Maybe it was in proposed code or something.
There's hundreds of businesses that we know nothing about.
Yeah.
It's home-based businesses that.
Like there's communities that do. Thing, if you have a home-based business that, you know, like you can't, typically, that's what communities will say. So if you had big trucks and loud, and you wanted to sign up, and you wanna try and operate it out of your house, they're not gonna let you do that, but that's zoning. That's not permitting.
Yeah.
There are some towns that do that. It's hard to enforce though because. Every, we get calls once in a while that'll say, I have to get a license to open a business, but I haven't seen anything.
So you'll work up a resolution for next time around?
Ordinance.
Or ordinance?
Everybody supportive of that?
I think we should talk to Bill Gray just to make sure there's not anything with regard to our Tree City USA or anything. That states we have to. This is only for discussion, so we don't have to.
Yeah.
Get everybody's approval tonight.
Right, I just don't want to go write an ordinance if everybody sells.
I'm in agreement.
Kind of consensus for tonight.
Okay, do I need a motion? It's just an agreement. Okay, got it. All right, going back to number ten. This is, um, opening the public hearing of fiscal twenty twenty-six annual budget. Five fifty-eight. Did we receive any public comments into city hall?
No.
Do we have anybody?
Do we have to vote to go into?
You do not have to vote to go into.
Tim likes to find those facts.
It's not in the state code.
What, Tim's facts?
It is not in the state code.
We've done it in the past, that's all.
That might be tradition, but we have to keep doing it that way.
Okay. I'm on board.
So do we, we don't have any statements online or internet? Okay. So then I would go ahead and close the public meeting, public hearing. Still five fifty-nine. Right, and then number twelve is resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one. This is the adoption of the fiscal twenty twenty-six annual budget. As Councilman Bill said last time, this is one of the first times we've had a balanced budget that we all feel pretty confident in. And we appreciate all the work that Lisa's put into this because it's been significant and the department heads. For really taking a look at their plans for the next year. So.
So page twenty-six is the resolution, basically says we're adopting the ordinance, excuse me, the resolution for the budget. Um, and that the tax rate is the twenty point nine oh seven. And the public hearing notice is on page twenty-seven.
Next to the final.
Yeah, by law, we have to have it done by April thirtieth, so if we do it tonight, then. We have time to get it into the portal, which then goes to the county auditor.
You're looking for a motion? I'll move.
Bills?
I'll second.
Right off. Any further discussion? Roll call. Bills?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Okay, number thirteen is discussion on fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget amendment, hearing dates.
So I have to get the, we're kind of in that middle of like using the G-Works and then Civic, so I want to make sure that everything that we will present is correct. But we definitely need to do some budget amendment work. I would have to be able to put in the numbers that we need to amend to, to be able to set the public hearing notice in the system, the state system. So I may be able to get it done by the May fifth meeting, so that you, you know, you have to vote to set the public hearing to do it and then have it. And we would have one more potential week to do it after the regular meeting, because we have early meetings on the fifth and the nineteenth. So just making everyone aware that if we need that time, hopefully everybody's supportive of, if we have to have a special meeting, then we will. Remember, we've gotten called out on the audit in the past for that by not having that done, and by law, it has to be done by May thirty. Yeah, so stay tuned, but I'm just putting on notice that maybe. If we were to have an extra meeting, we could just do a short meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, the day after Monday.
Would we do it at city hall or here?
Over the council. Probably better just keep it here if people aren't coming to where we usually go and then we're not there.
Okay.
So a regular meeting's gonna be the fifth and the nineteenth.
Fifth and nineteenth, yeah.
As I've told you before, it's just goofy because we have a Monday meeting and then we miss ten days till we can get anything in the paper if we wait, so.
And number fourteen is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three to increase the water deposit, uh, one hundred. And two hundred to establish a monthly due date of the fifteenth and temporary vacancy fee of forty dollars. Adding landlord requirements to register as the owner for utility purposes. And we are redoing, this is a first reading redone.
That's what the, um, advice of Attorney Sworson was. So basically I went to her and said, as I was reviewing this hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of delinquent utility bills. Uh, one of the biggest problems that we have is that there is many accounts, you know, we're unique in the fact that we have fifty percent of our properties are landlord. Owned with tenants. And so many of the properties have no landlord listed. We don't even know that it's rental property. People come in, they don't tell us that they have a landlord. And so number one, I want the application to require, even though it's gonna be a pain for the landlords, that they need to sign. Like, we want them to be required to register as the landlord of the property, number one. So that's kind of the main change. And then on the application, the tenant would be at the top, and then it would have the landlord signing off. So when you think about it right now, people just come in and say. Put the utilities in my name and they don't even own the property. We don't know who owns the property. And if we're gonna begin as we are enforcing that landlords are responsible for the bill, we want to be better communicating with the landlords. We want to know that we have them, and the only way that we can know now is if whoever has the utility bill in their name is not who owns it on Beacon. And so basically this then changes that they are required to register. So basically.
Doesn't seem like that much of an inconvenience to me. They still have to meet up with their clients. They got exchange keys and deposits and stuff so that, you know, they can sign that paper at that particular point.
Right. And so what I'm, what I'm sort of thinking about is like, how do we get to this place of having this information? So I feel like I want to use the rental inspection program as one tool. So we have three hundred properties that were registered successfully this year. So the first thing that we're gonna do is take all of those three hundred. Go into the utility billing system and see if whoever declared that they're the owner of these rental properties is listed in utility billing. If they're not. Once this would be passed, we would send them a letter saying, hey, we have record from the rental inspection that you own this. And that you are not registered in the utility billing system. You are required to be registered. Here is a form and going forward, you need to make sure that every tenant that you send in here. Because the other thing that happens is we literally send out utility bills to people who are tenants that says no forwarding address. They've bailed. I swear half the time the landlords don't even know that they're gone. We're not sending them a utility bill. The bill is still in their name. You don't even know about the landlord, like, it's a bit of chaos. When you look at, you know, why do you need to know who these people are? And I think it's just different when you have. Such a big number of properties that are rentals, so it's like chaotic.
So. I understand the issue and I, and I understand the approach. But I guess my question is, why don't we just make the, the property owners responsible for the water bill? And they can just relay it in form of rent to their, to their tenants.
Huge shift.
It's a huge shift.
Well, I mean, this seems like, like administrative nightmare to me.
It's not too bad. It's more like, it's fine for the ones that are present and involved. It's the ones that like literally don't even tell us that they own it.
And there's another question. I mean, when people walk in to get water service, don't we ask them, do you rent, do you own, who's your, you know?
It just, the current application says, do you rent or own, yes or no? Then nothing. It never said, who's your landlord and your landlord has to sign off on it. So some of it's just the way the application was. So we were looking at like Shenandoah's application, uh, that Bree and I discussed, and then we would just change that. So, but I think it's also, like, just because you come in, like, what if you were technically a squatter? How do we really know that the landlord says? The, the vast landlords are the ones that will not let you have a key. Until you come in and prove that you've signed up and paid your deposit.
And not.
So.
On behalf of landlords, though, I can understand why. They would not want to be responsible for everybody else's water bill.
Well, it's not making them responsible for the bill. They just, they just have to relay it in, in their charges when they're for the rent.
It's just hard though, because if you have one person that's like a crazy showering person and they're builders and then. Yeah, some stinky people.
It's pretty hard to set those rates.
You know?
Depending on the tenant.
You don't know how much the bill is.
This way they're responsible for how much water they use.
At the end of the day, the landlord is still responsible if you're gonna.
Yeah.
There's nothing to prevent that landlord saying, here's your base rent, plus the cost of utilities, and you're responsible for all of it.
You mean that the landlord pays it and then collects it like Bill Brian is saying? You can do that.
It's just really hard to figure out what people are spending on those.
And, you know, it didn't, it didn't occur to me. It would be probably a nightmare for the people that have a lot of rentals, because then they'd have to either, either they'd be overcharging their. Clients for their utilities, or they'd have that extra administrative burden on themselves.
How do we verify if they are actual renters? Even though, I mean, they might put down they own the property.
Just come in and tell us and we believe you right now. And that's my point, is like, if you're gonna be a tenant and we're gonna start, you know, like, we are notifying landlords now. But we're notifying them if we notify them, if we know them. And there's just, I don't know, there's just too many. And so then. Like I said, I feel like year one, we know those people like in the last two months have registered as the landlord, so we have that. And my plan is to go to SWIPCO and say, what are year two and year three scheduled rentals? And then we look them up on Beacon. And really try to communicate, because if we're all doing our due diligence and landlords get to pick their tenants and we don't. Whereas when it's an owner occupied, we hold you responsible. So we want to have better communication. And I think if we hold, if we hold landlords to a standard of communicating with us, we know that their landlords have approved them as tenants. We're sending them notification when they're delinquent, like all of these things go to better running it like a business. Right now, we just run it like. Free water charity.
Yeah.
If you don't pay your bill, thank you for nothing.
Yes.
Which is how we have a hundred and eighty-seven.
Tell me again, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand?
Hundred and eighty-seven.
Of delinquent bills.
You looking for a motion on this?
So, yeah, we would be redoing the first reading and then is everybody supportive of posting the agenda next time for a second and third? So technically, we still have done three readings, but we tweaked it on the second version of the first reading. And again, once that happens, then everybody that comes in after the code is adopted, they'll start paying the hundred dollars. These lien exemptions, they'll be in a different set of rules. Uh, we have some of these higher things. So hopefully we actually start covering some of our costs, because right now we're not running it.
So if we have a due date of the fifteenth, when the bill lays, when we send out the bills.
It'll still go out on the thirtieth. One of the things that we're gonna start pushing is e-billing. So you don't even have to set up an account online. All you have to do is give us your email address and you will instantly get an email for your bill. So you legitimately have two weeks of notice. And regardless, like, your due date's your due date.
So what if the bill comes and people are gone for the, you know, come for two or three, I'm just asking.
I guess be on auto pay if you're that person. You can be auto pay online, you can be free auto pay through city hall.
Or late fees.
You can pay ahead of time if you leave, you know, most people know their bill is forty dollars, fifty dollars, or seventy dollars, so. You know, worst case scenario.
To send out information to notify them that of the changes.
So like on the bill, we can say now due on the fifteenth. We thought about like highlighting it. Um, probably have some grace period, like the first week, like even if we say it. So I'm envisioning if we adopt this in the next two meetings, this and the next one, that the June first bill will be the first bill that is on the fifteenth. So we'll talk about it on the radio, ask the express to put it out there, put it on the bill, highlight the due date. Everybody that's in our system, so we have, uh, when I was working yesterday, I checked on the online portal. There's two hundred and eighty people already registered. In the online portal. Um, the nice thing about stuff like that is we can send emails to everybody, like right now. So we can say, not only did you get your bill, but attention, everybody, you are now due on the fifteenth.
So are you saying that we are going to have grace period or it's just a one-time grace period?
Just one time. Because again, like what I don't think people understand, why we've gotten so much in the hole. Is that the way we administered the program in the past was, we basically gave everybody sixty days to pay. So we sent you out a bill in March first. It was due on March twentieth. We don't send you a late notice until Feb, until April tenth, and then we give you another ten days. So by the time we shut you off on April twentieth, it's your bill that's consumption from the middle of February. To the middle, oh, sorry, the middle of January to the middle of February, billed in March, due in March. We don't do anything about it until April in the old way. And again, this was administrative policy, it's not the staff. But we have everybody that pays sixty days and doesn't pay the current date. So now everybody that's coming in. I said to a gentleman today, like, he's like, well, I don't, I just want to pay. I'm like, well, look, we're done with that. That was due March twentieth, and you're now paying February twentieth. And you're still owing April twentieth.
So do you have a late fee?
Yeah, it's ten percent, but it's a flat fee, like it doesn't go up the longer that you. Don't pay, so. You just, and if everybody does it one time, if you, you know, everybody pays once a month, but they're always paying super late. So then when you think about when these people leave, we have a seventy-five dollar deposit. They sometimes have ninety days in the books because a new bill just came out. You move out and you're sixty days late. Now you have ninety days of bills and seventy-five dollars doesn't cover any of these ninety days.
Well, because we even wait, he is only ten percent, so people are gonna wait. They're gonna wait.
But they need to be shut off once they're.
Yeah.
So what'll happen now is on the fifteenth, a shut-off notices, you know, you apply your penalties on the sixteenth, we'll probably wait till seventeenth or eighteenth. Your shut-off will be on the twenty-eighth, and you'll actually be shutting people off before the next bill. So there won't be all this, because right now you like already got a bill before you can get your shut-off notice. You know, it's just, it's just not good business. And I think all of that between sending the shut-off, the set off stuff to those people. We sent out a hundred and thirty tax lien letters. To delinquent utility bills. Remember, we decided last time that if you were a current tenant, you'd send a tax lien letter. There were bills that went out for five thousand dollars. One landlord had fifty-five hundred dollars in tax lien letters.
I'm sure he was pleased.
Haven't heard from him yet. We had nuisance abatements that are two years old for thirty-five hundred dollars. And if. I sent out three for building permits that people have ignored. Tell us they don't have to pay their building permits.
Way back, like fifteen years.
Well, the building permits is just in the last year.
Yeah.
But we paid SWIPCO, and so again, some of it is practice. What happened, what needs to happen now is SWIPCO doesn't do inspections until we say it's been paid. And if you start work and you haven't paid, we're gonna shut you down and we're gonna give you a stop work order. And then my next code request will be that you double the fees for people who don't come and get a permit. But what's happening is we like send you a notice, hey, you have a permit approved, come and pay, and then they just go start working. SWIPCO comes and inspects, we get a bill, and then nobody pays. Again, it's only four. And I'm sure I'll hear about those when those arrive in the nail box this week.
Yes. Happens to businesses or people that you wouldn't think would do that.
So hopefully once we get everything, or we're doing things consistently and running it like a business, then hopefully everybody gets used to those rules and. Won't be so uncomfortable.
So Bills, did you make a motion to approve this?
I have not, but I will move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three.
First reading?
First reading?
Yes.
And you're approving of. Suspension of the rules at the next meeting?
Yes. Second, as, as written here.
All right. Did you get that, Ashley? Got it. Roll call. Isaac?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills? Right off?
Yes.
Number fifteen is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four to increase the excavation permit fee from ten dollars to thirty-five dollars. This is the second of three readings.
Basically, just as everybody knows, like, just going through the process of approving the permit, making sure that people, um. Have a license to be excavating, like ten dollars doesn't cover much, so we up that to thirty-five, and then we also made sure that. Um, all costs will be assessed to the homeowner. Um, I did get an email from a gentleman in town that said, how can we hold, uh, them accountable when they're hiring people to. Trust that the excavators know what they're doing, but at the end of the day, like, we can't really stop excavators if they don't do it. So we can say, you're still responsible for hiring a responsible person that you hold responsible, so. So it does, I mean, we can try to go after excavating firms, but. If they leave us with an open hole, and I think that's happened in the past as well, we've had people who've done plumbing work and people complain about, um.
Streets not getting.
You know, that there's street openings and we have to again enforce our rules, which has, if you don't come back, we're gonna go pave it and then we'll come back and assess you, not just. The road gets to be open because somebody doesn't finish their jobs.
And these are second readings.
This is a second reading.
Already approved these one.
Yep.
Yes.
I'm going to approve the second reading.
Okay, of, of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four, Fredo?
I'll second.
Bradley? Roll call. April?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Okay, number sixteen is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five to increase driveway per. Okay, number sixteen is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five, to increase driveway permit fees from ten dollars to fifty dollars.
Again, just making sure that we're at least trying to cover our costs. I know like if we have a driveway permit, Chris has to go out and review it and make sure that things are being cut properly, that we're cutting away from the curb to make sure that the gutter line lines up. Um, and, and those driveway approaches are in our right of ways. So we wanna make sure that they're done properly. And then again, we added the section that would say if somebody somehow opened up their driveway, didn't complete it, then we have the right after notifying them to go back, finish it and assess them. Not that it happens, but at least if we have the teeth stuff and the shirt gets finished.
And that would be just through the, through the right of way, correct? We would just finish it through the right of way.
Whatever the right of way is.
And I think people have to understand that increasing all these permit fees that haven't been done for a long time and we are, our city employees are taking the time out and it's costing us money. So.
And if you think about an hourly rate, yeah.
Didn't increase some of the permit fees.
Yeah, absolutely. It's keeping up with hourly rates too. So this is the second reading. Take a motion.
I'm going to approve the ordinance.
Okay, Bradley to approve twenty twenty-five dash zero five, second reading.
Second.
Right off. Roll call. Bradley?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Avery?
Yeah, yes.
All right, we already did seventeen. So we're gonna go to eighteen, which is resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-three. This is the Historic Preservation Commission contract with Alley Pointer for the East Hill Neighborhood Assessment and twenty thousand dollar total overbill, which of which the city will owe five thousand. And it sounds like you're gonna have your office in Alley Pointer instead of City Hall. So you'll have access to better equipment.
So right, if you remember, we received a fifteen thousand dollar grant, uh, for being a certified local government. And Cece is our representative for that. Uh, we had twenty thousand dollars budgeted. The original contract that was sent in, uh, was for a lot more than that. Uh, basically then, I think Cece and the committee, the commission went through, um, and said that if we have volunteer hours, that that will count for the additional costs and that they said if they were awarded the bid, that they would put it down to the twenty thousand. So a lot of the, like Derek O'Neil, Cece's time, anybody that's doing some of that local work to try and help determine historic history of each of the properties in that East Hill neighborhood uh, would count towards that so that we can have the actual out-of-pocket costs that we pay them for twenty thousand.
Impressive package that I guess you and Derek put this together. They put all that together.
Yes.
So what, what are we looking at completion date on this? When can we actually get the certification?
The timeline is in there.
Next year, July twenty twenty-six.
It has to be done for the grant, right?
And how much in the Zink kind? Thirteen thousand? I don't know the exact figures.
So the final report says marks twenty, twenty of twenty-six, but presentation of the state board on June, in June of twenty twenty-six. So. And Alley Pointer is known for doing these historic preservation things. They've done ten other districts, I think. And this is, um, an area that encompasses about twenty blocks and a hundred and three properties in Red Oak.
And Cece, tell us why this is important to us.
Well, we're talking about historic, um, um, visitors or people, there's, there's a lot of people interested in historic properties and, and the history of communities, uh, which is told through the houses and through the, the people that lived in. Uh, it tells the history of the town, how it grew. But there's a lot of interest in that field.
Having, it'll add value to this and these people that turn around and tell. I'm really impressed with our history colleagues. I think that knowing the history of those and the plan sometime is to have more tours of the historic district. And I know Cece's worked hard. She's been the, uh, chairman of an historic preservation commission, which we haven't had for a long time. Somebody's been as dedicated as you have and I appreciate that.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Plus it gives us an opportunity to, if there, if there are codes that we want to eventually help to protect those properties, we could potentially do that.
And I think that we need to look at, um, what kind of events you put up in a historic district.
Yeah.
And what do you do with your driveways and all that kind of thing. So.
But that is, isn't that what your committee's kinda set up to do is things like that to make recommendations to us?
Right, right. Design guidelines and that would come after the, uh, historic district on the national register. So.
So this is just a motion to approve the resolution, which gives Lisa the authority to sign all the documents with Alley Pointer.
I move to approve that resolution.
Right off? Bradley? Roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Number nineteen is discussion on the city council procedures that were in your packet. There are three documents. There's meeting policies and procedures for the city council meetings. There is city council ethics and there's public hearing protocol.
Thanks, Cece.
And the reason we put these together is just because it helps us operate more professionally. It holds us accountable to our staff, what we can, what how we should approach working with our staff. Um, it just sets some real guidelines. And I, and these documents, in my opinion, if we do move forward to put these on, uh, to approve at the next council meeting, would be to have all council members, I would say, sign them annually, but every orientation of new members definitely have to have it in there.
Well, I've completely read through the ethics and the policies and procedures. And I think it's a good thing that we're even addressing this because the last few years, even when I worked for a big company, ethics was most important, right? Understanding and how you treat the role and, and be effective in any, in, you know, time you work for a company or work for government. So I think it's important that we follow those policies and, and, uh, work on ethics and even training sometimes. So.
Absolutely. So with the city of Red Oak City Council Meeting Policies and Procedures, this proposed policy outlines the procedures governing the conduct, conduct of the city council meetings, including guidelines for meeting order, public participation, and the decision-making process. It emphasizes efficiency, transparency, and respect for all members of the council, staff, and public. The city of Red Oak City Council Code of Ethics, this proposed policy establishes a code of ethics to ensure that public officials maintain the highest standards of conduct in their roles. It covers the expectations for acting in the public interest, complying with the law, maintaining transparency, and upholding ethical conduct to ensure public trust. And then the Red Oak Public Hearing Meeting Protocol, this proposed policy outlines the procedures for public comment during city council meetings, which we currently have that, but this just confirms it all up. Uh, including guidelines for both in-person and Zoom participants, ensuring that all voices are heard efficiently and respectfully. Uh, we got this information from the League of Cities and Lisa and I went through it to make sure it is adaptable for us.
So when it talks about gifts and favors and here, I, I, there's no, there's no monetary value on that. I mean, so, you know.
Right now, it's two ninety, not two dollars.
Isn't it?
Yes. Well, it's state code, it's state code. And they may change it, yeah.
So, and this doesn't supersede any of that?
No.
I'm concerned that it doesn't give the citizens a right to address the council without the approval of the mayor, the city administrator, or a councilman. They should have the right to address the council on any subject at any given meeting.
Well, this is our business meeting, John. They, you know, they do have the right to contact their council member, council members at large. And I take calls from, from people that don't even live in my, in my ward. And I'm, you know, I'm not at large, but that being said, if you wanna talk to your council member about something, you give them a call. You don't, you know, this is our business meeting. If we, if we sit here and talk to everybody about everything that we, that everybody wanna talk about, there'd be a case that we wouldn't get out of here today.
And again, by, by state code, we're, we're not even, we're not required to do a public comment section.
Comments section is if we. Well, and if we decide we wanna, you know, talk about public comments further, that's up to us. And if we wanna put those public comments on the agenda at a future meeting, that's up to us as well, but.
Well, the way, the way I said, I'm going off of Mr. I said, they can come in, sign up and talk about anything they want. Do not limit that. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't think that you can come in here. They can talk to any of us, but to sit up here for an hour to complain about something or talk to Webster, that's a little long.
I have people that call me and I make, I talk, uh, talk to them everywhere. I mean, I'll say, I will come and talk to you.
You call daily, yeah.
And the conflict of interest piece is really important to identify and a procedure for how you identify a conflict of interest. We do talk about if someone gets up and speaks and we would like to talk about some topic longer. Um, if it's somebody wanting to come to do something that, I would ask the council, if you want to talk about it longer, we can. But I guess my thing would be to put it on the next agenda.
Once I got to the conflict of interest.
Oh, it doesn't. I'm going, I'm just going through the list of what art was all in here.
I think the key that, John, that you brought up is people don't have a right to go back and forth with the council.
No.
Because people get the impression that they can come here and like question and answer you. And it clearly states in that best practices for the cities that there's no requirement to have public comment. I don't think anybody would say not to allow it. But when somebody just shows up and starts grilling you about questions, nobody knew that you were gonna come and talk about it. Like it goes back and forth. And so it's listening, receiving it, and then it's up to the council if you want to discuss it further by putting it on the agenda.
And then we do have.
It's a one-way conversation.
Public comment.
Until you decide.
They have a right to express their feelings.
They can during public.
Like them or not, whether she likes them or not, whether I like them or not. They have that right.
During public comments.
No, I mean, without a three-minute time limit.
No.
Nope.
I disagree with you wholeheartedly.
Well, guess what? Prior to night, prior to two thousand twenty-two, they didn't even have public comments on the agenda.
Correct.
So nobody was real upset then.
Well, and once again, John, if somebody wants to talk to you for three hours about a certain subject, they can call you.
People can come and see me and get answers.
I don't wanna sit here for five hours.
Yeah.
I'm not going.
Well, and it's not, it's not that, it's, you know, it's the protocol as well, you know, you know, we have to, we have to control our own business meeting because that's what this is. We own the business of the city of rural.
And part of our policy, creating policy is our responsibility. So this is creating policy that is therefore not arguable, that everyone would agree to.
So our intent was not to take action on this tonight, but to give you some time to digest it and see if there's anything that you're changed in there as a group. And then we would bring it back to the next meeting.
To the next meeting for resolution.
You know, I read through it as well. I didn't see anything in there. So I.
Just one thing. Under general provisions, rules of order, I just be very careful about this. It says the procedure.
What page are you on, Tim?
Uh, on page four, well, to set page seventy-seven in the packet.
All right, I got it.
About, uh, the general rules of procedure found Roberts Rules of Order, newly revised, yada, yada. Um, I don't know if anyone's actually downloaded a copy of that before. I have a copy. It's very detailed. So I would just be very careful in that this would not, um, bind us to following those two A T, because even the state of Iowa does not require cities to follow them that strictly. So I would just be very careful when you, how you word that, because if you wanna talk about a five-hour meeting, follow Roberts Rules of Orders and we're never getting out of here.
So how do we, how do we, uh,
You just want some generic statement.
Just something, maybe a little bit more generic. It's not about not having rules and decorum when we have a meeting. But to say that we are gonna follow those rules of order as in the.
Closely.
Yeah, you, you do not want to do that. It could be a guideline or something of that nature, but you do not wanna be pinned down with that.
Shall be a guideline.
Cause I looked that up too. It says it can be very burdensome for.
Yeah.
Everybody has to learn that they, um, make a motion to call the question.
Right. And that's the big thing, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we could do show guide.
Show guide, yeah, sounds good. Okay, moving on to twenty. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-six, this is the police furniture, office furniture from Pickett, Pickett. For forty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixteen cents. This will come out of the local office sales tax and the chief is here to talk about it.
Yeah, so, uh, it kinda sums up there in the, in the memorandum there. So the furniture apparently had, we bought back in two thousand thirteen when the law enforcement facility was, uh, first built and first opened down there. Uh, that kinda, at that point in time, I'm kind of bought some cheaper furniture, I guess. It's, if, if you guys have been in there, it's outlet is lifetime.
Looks like it's all particle board.
Yeah, it pretty much is. So, uh, we've been working with Lisa. We've, we've worked with a couple of different companies, Story Kenworthy, we tried to reach out to them, but, uh, they didn't wanna give us the time of day. They didn't wanna come down and, uh, take measurements and so on and so forth. So, uh, it, it's, it does state here, we are limited on space or storage in there. So we're, that's why we're looking at adding some additional storage places within the facility itself, as well as, uh, lockers and areas where the officers can keep, uh, extra change of uniform clothes. We find ourselves in a situation where we may be contaminated with something that we have to change out of that. And that would allow them to have that there and ready versus we, we don't have it now, essentially. Uh, a lot of this furniture comes with, uh, anywhere from a ten to twelve-year warranty. I know the chairs are twelve-year warranty. I think the furniture itself was twelve years as well. Uh, so if you have any issues with it, you just call, call them and they take, come down.
The reason I kinda broke it down into these chunks is I didn't want people to think they're spending that amount of money just to replace the desks. And so in breaking it down, when we went through, when the chief and I went through the quote, it's really looking at things like the cabinets, the wardrobes, and the lockers are really truly in addition. Like if you go to their offices, things are just strewn all over because they don't, you know, it wasn't built where this is where we're gonna store stuff and keep things. There's, you know, cleaning supplies and everything's just out on desks and it doesn't look, I think, the way that we would want the chief to be able to have his stuff. And so, you know, looking at, if you're just looking at the desks and the chairs, that kinda shows you we're looking at twenty thousand dollars. Um, but really, this is probably something that should have been done back in the day, but just wasn't. And I have a relationship. Um, as I explained before, I've had Pickett before. And then when I came here, they were like, why does that sound familiar? But they couldn't figure out why. It was because they had the hospital. So in their minds, they were in Montgomery County, not Red Oak. And so they actually did the furniture at the hospital as well.
Chamber office, just use them for, um.
For the table. Okay.
Yeah.
Where, where, where are they at?
The one.
And I think they got several locations.
I dealt with them in, out of their Dubuque office. So I contacted them because both Elaine and Chief had reached out to all these companies and nobody wanted to come. And so, because I had known the Pickett team from Dubuque, they connected to their Des Moines people and they came to visit. They, you know, went through everything, measured stuff, super professional. Things are gonna fit, you know.
So like when we talk about cabinets, we talk cabinets, like filing cabinets, we talk about cabinets with locks on them or?
Various.
Yep, yep. There's gonna be, uh, there'll be a lot of storage cabinets. There's gonna be a couple of storage cabinets going, going in the sergeant's office, one entire one.
We're talking like full height with opening doors. Like these aren't just little file cabinets.
Whole wall length in my office will be nothing but storage cabinets.
If you just think about ammo, you think about, you know, weapons.
The long thing, the shelves will be like, they could be interchangeable. You can pull them out and give them down. Yep. Whatever best suits you.
Yep, absolutely.
And is the old stuff salvageable? Is there a plan to get rid of the old stuff or what?
Some of it is salvageable. Uh, John here at the fire department, he was wanting to acquire, uh, two or three of the desks, the nicer ones of the desks, which should probably be in, in my office, uh, assistant chief's office, investigator's office. He has some desk he wants replaced down here. So a few of those would come down here. Uh, not many of them are quite frankly worth it. So there, there would be a few that could come down here, but chairs, anything else, uh, the, the ones we have now, I mean, you, you go to pull a file drawer out, it, it's that cheap price. We'll hit it just.
So are we gonna be responsible for disposing, but they're gonna haul it off? What's the story on that? Do they even know?
I guess I really can't answer that question. I don't know if we ever really.
Yeah, I don't think that they do.
Which we, I know we can, we can work with Chris and get a dump trailer or dump truck or something and, and get it up here. So when we, when they come in to do that, which we might have to do for the carpet too, when they come in to do the carpet, we might have to fly there as well.
And these have come out lost funds, right?
Yes, which can only be spent.
They'll come out like.
Yeah, straight here.
And this is the lost funds dedicated for.
Do they have warranty on them? Like on the warranty that works?
Yeah, uh, twelve years, I believe. I know the chairs are twelve years. And I think that, I think he told me the desks were twelve years too. I don't remember if I read it in there, but I, chairs are twelve years and there, and there is warranty on the desk as well. It does include installation, yes.
It'd be nice to have some nice chairs for the council chambers if we have to sit here for three hours.
Consider that later.
You got the power to shorten meeting.
So like the cabinets are all gonna be locked key, uh, I don't know, all of them will be locked key, but yeah, I think there is options for that.
They talked about some just need to be locked, some of their cleaning supplies, not some.
We don't lose the keys, right? Yeah, that's kinda what happens sometimes.
Don't talk that way.
I'm sorry.
Don't jinx it.
Sorry, I mean.
Alright, I would take a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Bradley.
Resolution twenty twenty-five, bill forty-six, please close your office. Bridge from Pickett.
Alright, Bradley, second.
I'll say to move.
Any further discussion?
I think.
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Phils?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes. Thank you guys.
Uh-huh, thank you. Uh, next twenty-one is discussion on the farm animals ordinance regulation, this is just discussion, um.
But some might be Lisa, yeah, yeah, the moratorium part, so. I don't know if everybody read it or not, but.
Yes, I love the fact that we're negotiating how many chickens you can have in the backyard.
Well, it's probably, it's good that we finally have it in writing instead of the unwritten rule.
Cause I always thought we did have it in writing.
I, I thought we did too, I thought it was six chickens and no roosters.
It doesn't say rooster.
It says none of that.
It doesn't care.
It's like as vague as they can be.
Yeah.
So it started because, you know, I've heard some of you say we have regulations, and I'm like, no, cuz I obviously get the applications. Then we had our complaints about a rooster, and as we're trying to get a hold of these people, it's like, well, the good news is specifically to them. It does not say that they applied for a rooster and their permit is expired. So I think the other thing that's happening is that these are one-year permits and nobody's coming to reapply for them, so we need to go back and say. Find all these old ones and let people know, like, hey, you're expired, and this is an annual thing, and we need to make sure that's clear when we're issuing the permits. So as long as we're talking about it, I thought, well, we should probably be clear, most towns will have a limit, and they'll say hands only, no slaughtering. So, I, uh, would like to know if you want us to draft one that has usually six, I think is probably the most common. And the no rooster rule, then we can bring that back for a vote, and then. I think one of you, when I was talking about it, made a comment about maybe people will be running in here to get their permit, so cities, when you are doing that. You have the right to create a little moratorium and say, we're not gonna issue any in the next two months until we get it done. Again, I would say I still have. Uh, a vague right to say, I'm sorry, you can't have roosters, I'm more concerned about the enforcement side of it, where chickens, roosters are still chickens. And we didn't really specifically outlaw, so if we wanted to say no new permits until this adopted. We'd obviously, if we come back on May fifth, it would be adopted by June, whatever the first Monday is.
How many have chickens?
I feel like, I, I don't really know for sure, but my guess is probably fifteen to twenty houses at most. That I think have, but again, I think they're all old permits, I think I've probably done four permits since I've been. I also find that like when they were supposed to do the coop and stuff like him, it says on the application, like do a. Little drawing of your yard, I don't see a lot of those in the old.
So, um, what do we charge for the bird?
Fun fact, the famous number that they all are, ten dollars. It takes me more time than, I don't know what. And it's just.
It's just a guideline for them to comply with it and get them submitted every year, so they don't, they each have twenty chickens.
Well, but we need to, again, like I, you know, we had one since I've been here, and even Pat last week, we got an application, so I sent him out, he met with the people, so if you take. Me reviewing it, the girls receiving it, issuing the permit, going out to review it, like.
That's fifty dollars.
Fifty bucks.
Yeah, it is.
It should be, so to me, if we're gonna on top of, because again, it's not trying to. Cover people's costs or to, to collect money that isn't warranted, it's. Just sending one person out and spending an hour. And then the processing is easily.
Fifty bucks doesn't cover it.
Right, well, at least it is close to covering.
But if, and they can have a lot of eggs and a lot of.
Well, I mean, we're, we're talking about. Chickens, are we putting rabbits in this too, how many rabbits a, a family can have?
Well, and, and.
Uh, and I, I, we, we've had a place in town here, that they had over thirty rabbits, and it stunk.
And are those considered farm animals?
That would be a farm animal.
It does say canaries, doves, pigeons, parrots, parakeets, gerbils, hamsters, goldfish, tropical fish, or other small animals caged and in a house are exempt. So were those rabbits outside?
These were rabbits somewhere outside.
Yeah, they're in ca, in, uh, rabbit cages.
I mean, to me, instead of calling it a farm animal permit, you would be better just to say chickens. Not have all this other stuff, like why do you want all these? I mean, I guess you can say bunnies and you can have.
Just, we do have people that are with four H and they breed rabbits.
Yeah.
They sell them.
In town, do we have anybody that has peacocks too, I was thinking we did, I think we have somebody that has peacocks too.
They're loud.
They're worse than roosters. Uh, I think we should just keep it to chickens.
For right now.
If it gets to be a problem.
Would that, would that be exotic though? Could that be considered exotic?
Peacocks would.
Yeah.
I would think so.
We don't even define a farm animal in here.
Alright, well, we're gonna move on, so that was the discussion, so number twenty-two is the resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight. For the moratorium on farm animal permits until the new code is considered.
Would you wanna say for the next six weeks, we're just not gonna issue permits?
Good with that.
Okay.
So now I would recommend having.
A resolution.
Twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight approved, and then I just basically would say. We're in the process, you know, we're not gonna dilly-dally, we'll get it to you at the next meeting, which would make it June.
And so if I'm, if I'm in possession of chickens now, I just need to come see you, we're all good?
Uh, well. I would say that it's a little bit of a fine line, because like we have this complaint about one that's expired, so I would say because they're renewing it. I don't think renewals should be, you can't say like, get rid of your chickens, just because we did this, so I think it would be new. But I would think that, um, renewals, and I just won't approve anything that's a rooster.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty, twenty-five dash forty-eight, moratorium on farm animal permits until a new code's considered.
Okay, bills?
Second.
Right off? Roll call, Bradley?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
He bring?
Yes.
Number twenty-three is resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-four, this is the M C D C position funding twenty-eight E agreements.
So you'll remember that we talked about at budget time that we've been providing fifteen thousand dollars in funding, along with the county, both of us have each provided fifteen thousand. It used to be as high as, I think, fifty thousand back when it first started.
Fifty each.
Um, so fifteen, right now, we put in the budget that you just adopted, an additional thirty thousand dollars, which came out of economic development funds. That there's about a hundred thousand dollars sitting in there right now.
So that's an additional over the fifteen, so thirty plus fifteen, so forty-five, okay.
Correct, and the fifteen was actually getting paid out of water and sewer, split between the two before, the thirty would. Be economic development funds, and that's a line item in the budget. So, uh, they are prepared to start advertising for their hiring, which we discussed at their, uh, our meeting, I'm on the board, obviously, on Friday. And they reviewed the twenty-eight E and are recommending that they are in support of it and recommending for the council to approve it. So this would basically spell out that in order for the city, uh, to provide this person with benefits, they would be on our payroll. So that's how they would be able to get our benefits, and that's what we'd be covering the cost for, and then the salary for the person would be. Paid back to the city.
So we're gonna, we're gonna front up with thirty grand of the salary, but we're gonna supply them with benefits, which is gonna be about thirty grand.
We're just going to pay for the benefits.
We're gonna pay for the benefits, we're not gonna give them the.
We're not giving them thirty and paying for them.
No. So we're gonna give them the benefits in lieu of paying them.
The benefits are the contrib, the city's contribution.
So I misunderstood this, cuz I thought we were gonna pay them the thirty grand, plus give them the benefits, and I was, that was not working out.
No, the, this is to provide benefits only, so instead of like, right now, the city cuts a check to M C D C. For their contribution, the city would stop doing that, so the city would provide benefits, M C D C would then cut a check to the city. To provide the actual salary of that person.
And then the county's gonna kick up an additional thirty as well? Cause they cut their funding.
Two, two thirty, they're increasing, they budgeted for thirty.
Well, they were, I thought they budgeted fifteen.
They did, but.
Thirty now.
The past, they did.
Not thirty new like us, so we would be putting forty-five on the table. They have approved, I don't know if they actually had their public hearing, but they have put in their budget thirty thousand dollars.
Next year.
Wait a minute, what do you mean, we're putting forty-five on the table?
Cause there was fifteen before that was coming from water and sewer, and now we're budgeting out of economic development money, thirty. So it's a total of forty-five.
Continue that way, so we're gonna continue to support them?
The benefits may not hit that amount, correct?
I, I, I see no benefit for us paying more. Than our fair share of benefits or salary for this position, when it's not a city position, it's, it's a county position.
No, it's not a county position.
Montgomery County Development Corporation.
They are contributing to that.
But, but why would we contribute more than our share of that?
Because I think we're the biggest city in the county.
And we're the county seat.
That we provide regional, you know.
Then we should have, then we should have more autonomy with, with the position than.
We do, really, I mean, when it comes, I don't do it.
But the person clearly in this twenty-eight E works for the M C D C board.
So, once again, so Red Oak is picking up more than fifty percent of the cost of this position.
They have to go out and raise a lot more money than what we're contributing.
So what they do, um.
The other cities do provide.
They provide a amount of support. They contribute, Stan contributes, but what's that?
Both contribute to M C D C.
Contribute toward the salary.
Through the county?
No, outside of the county, the county is separate, they.
So, but, but we don't have, we don't have access to that information.
Sure we do.
Well, we can tell you.
No, I'm saying, for me to make the decision, it's not here, I mean, I don't see how much Valiska pays, I don't see how much Stan pays, I don't see how much Elliot pays.
No, I think Valiska, I can't remember.
I think he pays like five thousand.
I don't have it in front of me.
But they do contribute, and, um, also, the, um, all of the, um, manufacturing. And businesses contribute to that yearly income that M C D C gets every year towards the salary and. The expenses. We have about twenty partners that contribute.
What's the counties?
Generally speaking, most of those are out of Red Oak.
The county's contribution's gonna kick back up to thirty, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and, and we're gonna go up to forty-five.
Potentially, if the benefits cost that much.
But it's just to provide the benefits, if the benefits don't cost forty-five, then we're not going up.
Well, we kinda know what our benefits cost.
Well, it depends, not necessarily, are they single?
Depends on what your salary, you know, your salary plus, yeah, whatever your.
So our financial contributions would be about thirty thousand.
And one of the biggest things that the M C D C did this last year was purchase the railroads for. From the chamber, and that's very important, uh, to have as part of our industrial development. To keep the railroads for, and that's, that was really something for the M C D C to take over.
That last year. You know, that really wasn't M C D C's initiative though, that, that was, that was a result of the mayor's initiative, M C D C was ready to sell it.
You know, the chamber owned it, M C D C did not.
But it was ready to be sold.
It was ready to be sold, yes.
It was just repaired, and, and once again, if it wasn't for the mayor's initiative, we would have sold it to a private corporation. And had been gone, so. So I, you know, I don't know how much value there is in that.
M C D C took it over, it becomes very integral part of our industrial.
It's a part of the tool.
And this is also you, being used as a tool to attract a full-time person, to take the position.
I, I am not, I am not opposed to supporting M C D C to a level that's, that's effective, what I'm opposed to is supporting it. For more than our fair share, that's why I'm opposed to it, because they work for the entire county.
Correct.
I will say.
But they're also probably gonna end up working for Red Oak just due to the fact that we are the county seat.
And I think.
We are a larger community than the other ones, but still, the other communities do contribute to M C D C, so. If you would probably look at what the county does, plus what the other communities do, you're looking at a pretty level playing field, I think.
You're talking about one employee, one person employed, so I don't think that the, um, benefits will exceed what we did contribute.
How, how do you, how do you know that, how much they're putting time in for Red Oak, how do you manage that?
It's a salary position.
That's the hardest part of that position.
It's really hard to. That's what I'm getting at, because I mean, you could have a person in there, and I'm, you could have a person in there, that's gonna put in more time for another town than us.
You know, we do need, we do need an economic developer, there's no doubt about that, we do need economic development.
It was established to be a true countywide economic development entity, yet the three years that I was there, I was constantly battling. People in Red Oak feeling like I was not giving ninety-five percent of my time to Red Oak. When fiber optics was like the number one priority at the time, and childcare, which. Pretty much consumed my time, so I think for the person that this would. Whoever the person would be, that's the hard part to that position, is you've got. City of Red Oak acting like we're.
But we're not acting like we're the boss, it's clearly outlined that they answer to the M C D C board, not the city of Red Oak. So we would not be acting like we're their boss at all. And I think really, you're, you're, what, to your point, Adam, you're talking and saying, well, how much time are they gonna do, uh, give to each city, well, I think the board would. Ensure that they're being fair across all communities.
And they have representation from Valiska and Stan.
Right, so I would think that if they feel that it's being unfairly toward one community or the other, I'm sure that they would speak up against that. And vice versa, if we felt that they were giving not enough time to the Red Oak community. We would speak up against that as well.
Yeah, I was gonna wear this around, get free in front of more money, I mean, I want them to make sure that we get. A little more bang for our buck.
But again, I don't think it's a significant amount, depending on, again, what the benefits is, and this also. Is a good way to try to get others to up their contributions as well.
That's what we need.
I have to say.
Start somewhere.
We've had some great collaboration between Stanton and Valiska, Jenna has supported the M C D C for as long as I was on the board, and. Wouldn't you agree?
Well, I mean, this, yeah, Stanton as a whole do, they, they support M C D C.
And they try to. Try to make sure that our, their activities and ours and their building, that Jenna explained a lot of things to us. About grants and things that we didn't actually have a handle on, and she really helped us, I thought.
So I was unaware that these other communities were contributing. Uh, I've only heard of the county's contribution and the city's contribution, I've never heard of Valiska's or Stanton's or Elliot or anybody else's contribution. So that answered my question on that.
I do think, um.
And again, generally speaking, most of the larger, um. I would say, you know, members are in the Red Oak community.
There's no doubt, there's no doubt about that.
I think that when. Like the way I sort of look at things from a regional perspective, is sometimes those of us that are in a position to be able to help more. Have to take the stand that we have to work together, and even if something goes to Stanton. Or something goes to Valiska, it is still good for our community, there are people that drive here, and we cannot all have our living in our silos. And say that we just want you to pay attention to Red Oak, and that we don't care about good things, like our employees live there, in some cases. And everything that's good, and if we don't take the leadership role, like the goal ultimately is to get people to pay more. To have a full-time person to pay attention, to get more private sector buy-in, so that eventually. We don't have to contribute as much, and I think that those who are on the county board that attend our meetings have all said. That if we don't step up and first say it's important to our community for economic development, that we aren't gonna get in a place that we want to be. And that we do have the largest community, we have the largest industrial base, even if it's technically out in the county and not been annexed to the community, but. Um, and the other thing is that you're the only community that has another full-time person who's working on that stuff in having a full-time city administrator, so. I'm gonna be here, they're in our town, I'm gonna be able to work with the person that we hire, and so, there's no reason that whatever help I need, I'm not gonna be able to ask for that help. Um, and it's just a good investment for good stewardship of the community, and it doesn't mean we have to do it forever. Um, but if we at least don't step forward and say, we believe in economic development, we believe in regional behavior and thoughts. That we're never gonna get to a better place, and so it might not be perfect, it's kinda like, why do we belong to the chamber? Does every business stand up and say, these are the seventeen things that I get, or. Are, by being a member, are it is for the greater good of the region, so, I, I would look at it like a leap of faith in trying. To bring in a full-time person, um, it's hard to attract someone to work for one small entity that doesn't provide good benefits.
You know, I, I understand all that, and I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this after, after the discussion, but I, but I will throw this out there as well. So in the past, and I'm not saying it'll be in the future, but in the past, there's been reluctance. Uh, at the county level to subsidize anything going on in Red Oak, because it's Red Oak specifically, and it doesn't benefit the entire county, so. So to say that, you know, that. Once again, I, I'm not saying that's gonna happen in the future, but I have seen it happen in the past.
I do think you should add in here that quarterly, you spelled out the, when they would get payments. I think you should also require a quarterly report. Update.[1786.84]
I mean, I think that that's again up to the board. Like, I don't think we want, I mean, if they're not coming back to report, they're just.
That wouldn't be on us.
You know what I mean? Like, if they don't, that's a problem. But for us to say that's the only way we're going to give you money. Like, if they're not, they're going to eventually wean themselves off of it because.
And true, I don't know why they wouldn't anyway without having to be told.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that wouldn't be on us. That, you know, we're just, we're just paying the bills. We're not running the show. Do you need a motion? I'll move.
Bills?
Yep, resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-four, M C D C position funding.
I'll second. Bradley? Roll call. Phil?
Yes.
Right off.
I'll abstain since I'm president.
Isaac?
Yes.
Adrian?
No.
Bradley, yes.
Yes.
Right, number twenty-five is resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-seven. This is regarding Pat's updates wage for the nuisance and code enforcement officer. Basically, it's he did begin on the fourteenth and the hourly rate is twenty-seven dollars an hour. And that's more in alignment with the level of of um leadership effort. Across the board of the city.
I think we can see what kind of background he had and what is he after.
So he worked mainly for the last few decades at the prison.
In Clarinda.
In Clarinda. So in terms of like just being able to be a stronger force for enforcement. Having experience um in dealing with situations like that, he did a lot of um like radio security cameras, different things like that.
He's on the governor's board.
Yeah, and does, yes.
He does.
Yeah, he is. He is on his state board.
He's here for a long time, actually.
You what?
He's been here for a long time.
Yeah, I think he was eight.
Wouldn't keep him on board.
Yeah, I knew his parents.
So.
Yeah, I moved to approve that.
Okay, right off.
I'll second.
Adrian, roll call. Right off?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yeah.
Adrian?
Yes.
Bradley, yes. Phil?
Yes.
Right, number twenty-six, resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-five. This is non-union vacation increments. And holiday and implementation dates for the new vacation increments. So we basically have thirteen identified holidays. I think this is a part of the negotiation with the union contract and this is making it levels across the board.
That's kind of two phases. This is what you already approved for the unions, for the holidays and the vacation. And then remember that we originally thought we would be doing our implementation with the civic payroll and all the other systems after July one. And so we are inputting everything into payroll right now, so we'd like to just implement the new increments as of this week instead of. Waiting, have input everything in the old system, values increments, and then switching it again in July when it's. It's a huge undertaking for the staff to be able to get all this stuff in there. So it would be helpful to do it once. So it's basically union equals non-union benefits and then implementing it right away.
And if I remember correctly, the the union benefit uh changed by one day. They had one additional holiday.
Not two, it was uh well, one and a half, I guess. Two and a half. Christmas Eve Day, a half a day on New Year's and Martin Luther King Day.
And they weren't able to carry over their vacation, right?
They can carry over two weeks.
If you leave prior to a year, though, you do not get reimbursed.
Right.
Yeah, the carryover stays the same. That's just the increment. Remember that we talked about. In the old system, you got no vacation for a year, you got a week after a year, and then by two years, you got two weeks. So basically. That's just not the way the world works anymore. People aren't going to take a job and work for two years with one week off.
No.
So we're basically now going to give you two weeks at three months. You have to use that because then you start in the two weeks. Every year, when you get to three weeks, you go to three years. And then instead of waiting like twenty-some years to get to the top, you get the top at fourteen.
Remember when the city used to only have nine holidays, so.
And this still isn't like true bankers' holidays, but it's definitely more in line with the public sector holidays, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, Columbus Day, things like that are still not.
But Martin Luther King.
These are vacation days, right?
Yeah.
It's holidays or vacation.
Vacation is one part of it and holidays is the other.
We're not talking about any sick leave or anything else with that, just vacation.
So I would recommend that resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash forty-five, please.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-five.
Bradley?
Second.
Right off. Roll call. Isaac?
Yes.
Adrian?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Right off.
Yes.
Number twenty-seven is discussion on the twenty twenty-six Highway Forty-eight Bridge Reconstruction Project. An online input survey. So Lisa forwarded this from Scott Stur with the D O T for us to review. Have you all looked at that? It's a short three and a half minute, four minute video.
Like one question on there for the survey or something.
Yeah.
I reviewed the video.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody reviewed it. If you had any questions, I thought together collectively, it would be easier for us to give that to Lisa.
Because I.
Yeah.
And I mean, and.
They're going to keep one side open no matter what. They were going to close it completely, but it will, it's, we're looking at.
One side, that's what I said.
Yeah.
They're going to run the stoplight, correct?
Yeah.
So what my question was, all these big trucks that go up and down forty-eight, is that one side going to be enough to? Get those through?
Well, I think the reason, if you listen to it, I think it said that because there's no good detour. So for us, it's good news if they're not going to detour.
Yeah, they can't go over our bridges on on Second Street or Fourth Street.
Make sure they have enough. I just don't know how you do one side of the bridge. Of course, they did that out there on.
They do that all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do you want everybody to do their own comments or do you want us to give them to you and you do one?
I would think it's better for.
I did my own.
Okay.
I did one.
That's not a road though.
All right. Okay, so everybody's just going to do their own comments by the twenty-eighth, okay?
And I did post it on Facebook as well, so.
Good, okay. Good deal.
I can make a sense of the stack.
So that'll start next spring and be done by next fall. So it's twenty-six.
And they they've changed their mind because they were going to do a bus over there and now they're going to do an actual bridge again.
Yes.
They clean up that part of the grid too, whether.
Wouldn't it be nice? No, I'm sure they won't. Uh, number twenty-eight is discussion on the.
I do want to say, um, we are going to be required to replace the water main there. Um, and I think Clint, we asked them if they would do it as a part of their contract. I don't think we got an answer, did we?
We haven't got an answer yet. Um, yeah.
You want to call here?
Uh, it's got to be re- re-engineered. Um, we've asked them at their engineering firm to just do it while. We got one contractor there to do it. Um, we had to divert well around the bridge while it's doing, then we'll tear the pipe off. Got to put the pipe back on. Um, there's a hundred dollar fee to attach it back to the bridge that was supposed to happen last time. It didn't, but. Um, it's a one-time fee. Um, so yeah, there's just a few little things like that. Just trying to figure out how we're going to go about the engineering beyond, so.
That's the only thing we're responsible for then.
It's a water main, engineering fee, yeah. So, yeah, they're hoping they can get it in so the same contractor can do it all at one time instead of. Us having to wait until they're done and then hire a contractor to come in and do more to the bridge there too, so. It'd just be more cost-effective to do it at one time, but we haven't gotten the answer back from them yet, so.
So our alternative is because J E O is doing work on the water system. I also have them lined up to be giving us a price. And be able to compare. So we'll wait and see. But there were some questions and the engineer that we're dealing with didn't know the answer, so.
We're going to go on that. Okay, number twenty-eight is the discussion on the property tax reform. Um, I had Lisa, I think, forward the this out to you all with a link to go look at on the Iowa League of Cities website. We did hire a company that did modeling for every community in the state of Iowa to look at what their proposed new um. Policy, how it would impact.
We hired, you mean the Iowa.
The Iowa League of Cities, sorry, the Iowa League of Cities hired, yes, thank you. Yes, the Iowa League of Cities hired a a company to do modeling for each community because. What they're trying to, in a nutshell, they're trying to get local municipalities to focus primarily on essential services only. No more parks, all of those other amenities. So, um, and they made it very clear that's that that's kind of where their focus should, our focus should be on cutting costs and getting back to just that. Also, just another thing to note, I think the governor has a bill, an energy bill. I'll have to, I'll go find my email so I can read this to you, but basically the energy bill in the back of it, it explains that they're going to cap. Franchise fees on gas and electric at three percent and they will become effective immediately once it passes. So our five percent will no longer. Yeah, it'll go down to three percent. Only Des Moines can go to five percent. Whole idea, yep.
That's not law yet.
Not law yet, but it's pretty close. So this is this, um, this is a House study bill and a Senate study bill. House study bill three twenty-eight. And Senate study bill twelve twenty-seven. Um, when that link that you go to will open up. Um, I'll show you what it looks, opens up like a list and you have to alphabetize where Red Oak is in this list and you click it. And then it will open to. Click that and then you go for like Red Oaks under. Under Prairie City and Reinbeck, you click on that. Oh, dang it. Anyway, the document basically shows us what we can do for growth and no growth, and it's just really confusing, so. I need to get some specific information from the league to explain those documents to you guys. But I did want you to be aware of the franchise fee piece because that's pretty significant. And I was going to read this.
So that's the state's official stance is they want cities to quit uh subsidizing parks and public recreation.
I don't want to say that on the record, but that's what the long gist of.
What do they think's going to happen? All of our parks are just going to let them weed up?
Sell them as lots.
Fill in the pool with concrete.
They did this with the House about seven eighteen and, you know, told the counties how they can tax and now they're going to come into the.
Trying to limit growth.
Cities and tell us how we can do our business too. That seems pretty wrong.
We're trying to limit our growth to two percent, which, I mean, costs of everything are more than two percent. So even to do traditional business operations from year to year is beyond two percent. So, um, I've got an email from the league, uh, it's kind of a. I might just send it to Lisa to forward to you all just to help educate you on kind of some of the takeaway from all these conversations I can get to.
I haven't seen that, for sure.
Um, and then it kind of gives an overview and explains things better than I can. Um, but it's definitely worth reading and then looking at those documents as well. And I will try to get some. Um, written statements that kind of define what those documents are that are part of that link, okay? All right, that's all I have for that. Um, and of the franchise fee agreements, that if it goes to three percent, a quarter of the cities. Will be forced to go back down to three percent that are already at five. So it will affect a quarter of our cities in the state of Iowa. Um, number twenty-nine, upcoming city council meeting, a regular meeting is May fifth. And then the next one's the nineteenth. I think we already talked about if we have to have a special meeting, um, we can do it on the Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. Uh, number thirty is reports, comments, and I know our staff are back there. We do have to figure how to get these. Up earlier in the agenda and and Chief Ramey, um, and Brad Baker and Clint Rowland all did reports for us. And Chief Ramey, you did an awesome job on your report.
Yeah, so I guess the big thing is, is you guys looking at it, we gave you a lot of graphs and numbers and everything. Does anybody have any questions on that, I guess, is the first. Um, you touched base on a lot of different things and that multiple pager points, so. Um, I I will answer any and all questions if you have any reference to that.
So I can, I can read the pictures pretty good?
Yep.
And it looks like our crime rate's going down, is am I correct?
That would be correct, yes.
And can you establish any reason for that or?
Uh, you know, honestly, if you look, if you look at the graphs, it goes year by year. Um, and as far as one reason. To another why it varies from year to year, um, there can be a lot of different things involved. Or or involved in that, so uh as far as for me to point one thing out, I'd like to say, yeah, our guys, our guys are making a presence within the community, but that's. Just a small portion of it. Uh, so, uh, again, back to the year to year, you know, as you look at the graphs, you know. Uh, you can go back, I think, twenty twenty-two, when we had a higher number of. If I could find my graph here.
My alcohol and drugs have gone down a little bit.
Yeah, and and you can, you can kind of contribute to some of that as 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 generations get older, there's less drinkers in the group. Uh, maybe less recreational bars in the community, as I was uh mentioned as well. Um, there's more people being responsible, drinking at home, so on and so forth.
Do we have less calls since we have less bars now?
Uh, no, I wouldn't say that. I think last year we had about, we ran about sixty, just shy of sixty-six hundred calls. Uh, and the year before that, I think we were, um, less than that, or more, less than that, yes. Definitely providing you guys with way too many pages, apparently.
I had these pictures all figured out at one time.
Uh, so twenty twenty-four, we were six thousand five hundred seventeen calls and twenty-three, we were at seven thousand two hundred sixty-two. And then in twenty twenty-two, we were six thousand three hundred twenty-six. No, I wouldn't say that that bars have any. Uh, drastic increase or difference in what our calls for service are.
Cause we've lost a couple, correct, in the last few years? Seems like we've gone from like four to two now or something like.
Yeah, maybe just uh just one probably in the path closed that.
That was it?
I think that was the only one that's here in my six years that I've. Did I recall, so.
Was the uh pit stop, was that a bar?
It was.
That's been a few years.
That's been a long time.
Hopes is gone.
That's, hopes has been long gone for a long time as well. So, and I am looking back, I mean, hopes was a problematic bar back in the day. Um. Pit stop not necessarily as much, but. And again, that varies as well. I mean, bars can be problematic when you get patrons in there that consume too much, or the case may be. Fights break out or whatever, so on and so forth.
Have you seen a rise in domestic?
Uh, no, our domestic calls have been, there was a. So, I mean, I mean. No, yes, we have seen a rise in domestic. Sorry, I was thinking, I I looked at twenty-three. We are up, uh, about fifty percent on domestic calls.
About mental health.
Yeah, and a lot of that does stem, mental health is a, is a, is a problem. It's a pandemic.
That, those kind of can go together too.
Absolutely. Um, uh, last year, twenty twenty-three, we had a hundred and ten domestic uh related calls.
Is that due to like things happening that closed down in Clarinda? Mental health facility?
No, that's been, that's been down for a while. We just, we just don't have resources for any mental health. Just disabilities or or problems with the young community or within a short distance of our community. They have done a lot with telehealth or telepsych, but again, that's not the same, that's not the same.
Not in pain.
So speaking, I attended a seminar up in, um, Council Bluff six, eight months ago. And, you know, that was one of the big topics was police departments being trained to respond to mental health emergencies vice. Crimes, you know, and sometimes you get called to something that's really not criminal activity, it's a mental health issue.
Yep, one percent.
How you, how do you deal with that?
Uh, yeah, that's, we got telehealth, telepsych, um, that that we, if we find ourselves in situations like that, that we we can't de-escalate, we. We try to, I guess, calm waters the best we can, then we, we have the capability to log it on and uh going through a telepsych. If if we have the time, I mean, some of those can take hours. Um, sometimes we find ourselves have to transport them, the. Fire DMS doesn't come out, transport them to the hospital or they go through a telepsych. Um.
They do that.
Yep, yep. So, um.
The state does mandate is in an hour a year, you have to do a mental health. Consider an hour a year, yeah.
I think it's just an hour, but it's, yeah, it's, it's still on. Larger departments are putting, I guess, we're calling mental health specialists, they're putting them onboard with the officers and. And they have officer, they're responding with officers to these calls.
Well, that was one of the things that they brought up here. There's a lot of people end up with criminal records that really shouldn't because, you know, they're having a mental health meltdown. They get charged with, you know, assaulting a police officer or something.
Yep, yeah.
A lot of it is teaching teachers, it's teaching police, it's teaching a lot of people like how to best respond to them. It's not always.
Well, and even how to, how to respond to questions when they call in.
Yeah, education's key in the, in the, in the mental side of that, for sure.
Do you find that, um, most of them are locals or people that are visiting or talking to assaults or?
For mental health?
Falls for assaults or anything like that.
Uh, most of them are, um, I would, I would say seventy-five percent. Seventy-five to eighty-five percent of what we deal with, they're local. I mean, we'll use rag right, for instance, we deal more with local people. On a, on a criminal side of it than we did with any of the rag right people. You know, I mean, the rag right people were great. It was our locals that were creating the problem.
I love this annual report. Kind of wish we had it for every department. Sorry, guys. But it kind of highlights what people have done, what trainings. I mean, um, with Amber getting her national certification for child passenger safety, has she done any car seat trainings?
Yeah, actually, we had their first one uh, two weeks ago, seven twins, so we did first one.
And then Mike and John with the crisis negotiation training.
One of the bigger things we, uh, we did implement this year was the peer support team. If you get rid of that, if you're in a peer support team, that's a combination of the fire department, police department, Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. Uh, that's been utilized on a couple of different instances. They were just recently in Page County. They had a pretty significant accident down there involving an eighteen year old. Our, our personnel responded down there and did a debriefing and uh, assisted them there. Um, we've used them a couple of times here. Um, so that's, that's pretty key. On those things, we had an Atlanta, they gotta come out of Des Moines or they gotta come out of Council Plus. So. Being able to send those guys and and the fire department and the sheriff's office willing to, to come together with that, being able to send them to the training to. To be able to go out and 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 debrief these individuals that have gone through a traumatic or stressful traumatic situation is is huge.
And I have to commend you and your entire force for all your community engagement. It's nice to see, kind of a new thing.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
I say new, you know, the last four or five years.
Yeah. Or or longer, but yes.
Yeah.
And Amber. And Amber working with you on grants, that's also big.
Yeah.
Cause there are specific grants for law enforcement and we've gotten some.
Yeah. That one's gotten, we just got notification, we didn't get that one for the next year just because they've be, they've become. So straight, they're really focusing on larger communities such as the metro areas where um, they feel like they have larger. Larger issues or governor traffic safety bureau, they're, they're wanting seat belts and trying to reduce injury crashes and so on and so forth, so. Uh, they, they got pretty stringent on what they did and how they looked at numbers this year, so uh, we actually just got an email notification. That's.
And they're just on the specialized training and each of the offers. I think that's good. Alright, anybody have any other questions?
No, but thank you because I just think it really helps to have you out in the community. People are seeing that you're involved and I think that's important. I think they feel more comfortable with, you know, that it used to be.
Yep, absolutely. That's, that was one of the big reasons why we, we as the police department, the fire department, the sheriff's office, the M M's, the national.
You're doing a great job, Chief. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. Brad, you're up.
I'm sure you all read my report in the gist of everything, so I won't read it either, but questions, we have to answer.
Okay, sure.
You're not, you're not gonna, you're not gonna touch your own horn?
Good. We're, we're utilizing it. I wouldn't say every time because we still, you know, have some different scenarios, but we are getting it out and. The times we've utilized it, we haven't had to move monuments, which is a huge part of the equation.
Oh, good.
So lots safer.
So you can use those to put the monuments back upright too, anything like that?
If we had to, if we had to, we could do some of that work, yeah.
So this is kind of your busiest time of the year. You see anything coming up to? You need help with anything that you, we need to be aware of?
You know, the, the staffing situation's always an issue, but for once, we might. Be thinking we're okay if I didn't just kiss it that way, but um. We have some, some good help right now. We're, we're having a couple of returning guys come after college is out. So looking forward to their return, which would put us for once into full what I consider full.
Are you gonna have Sedona Moller all summer?
Probably.
Well, I, I gotta tell you, I, I can't tell much. I appreciate you stepping up recently with. Well, going on with our park department and stuff and.
Well, it's, it's everybody within the city.
No, I understand that. I understand that, but I appreciate what you've done and I appreciate all the hard work you've done to some area. You've made a huge difference out there with all your initiatives with the kiosk and. Just getting things organized and.
We do have some interesting things coming up with that. I just jumped, already mentioned it that the, the kiosk is gonna be. Backed up by its own website, goes just about ready and hopefully in the next. Definitely three weeks, we'll be full more on that so we can get the military history pages in. That was part of kind of phase two for us.
Uh, is there any of that out there now?
There none of that out there now?
No, no. So all of it's in, you know, through the development, we just have to get it all put together and accessible. Uh, then everybody can build pictures and in biographical records on military sites. Uh, we're gonna take about eight hundred and some records from the depot kiosk and incorporate them into our information, so. Um, it is field kiosk like our old kiosk was, so both of them would scrap. That information pretty easily and they give us permission to go forward with that.
But all the company and guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice.
Um, so we'll be doing that. We, I'm also working with Kenny Hammond and he is working on this. We, we took all the pictures of our burials of the fire department members. And we're gonna work police and sheriff's office and we're gonna have a first responder page in addition to the military page. So. Um, there's a lot that's gonna be tended behind the scenes, you know, not a huge expenditure of money. It will all still fall under the. Donation money, everything that's.
We'll do our clusters.
Yep, I've got that in the report. So the, the question walk, um, we're looking at six. Individuals this year, that's, that's gonna be recreated. So.
It's on Friday, the twenty seventh at nine thirty? Okay, I'm gonna come this year.
The columns last year, but two of the other columns that we're working on. One is going to be thirteen thousand because it has to be rebuilt practically, is the old bricks, so.
The bricks have actually split, not on the seams, but down through the brick like a. They're, they're no good, the whole place is no good. It was way the interior was done on. That's what we were told. So they formed them up and then poured concrete down.
Have you done any more uh, discussion about the metal part of the fence?
We talked about it. I thought that's about all.
A year ago.
I know there's been some discussion on it. I just wondered if you had any one.
Questures are almost our cemetery.
Oh, I think it has to be kept. The discussion in the past has been. You know, if you look at a scenario where it's powder coated or. Change. And the other side of, you lose the, the antique look and and everything that's got a hundred and however many years.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you heard that one in there, but I've worked on that. I mean, that was, that's all hand union, that's all blacksmith stuff, for sure.
Brad's been doing a lot of work and again. It's all the different departments. Brad's kind of taking the lead on parks when we needed help. And then Clint and his crew uh have taken the pool on and so just with some of our shortages and thankfully we've had some good staff. But everybody's been super.
Well, I mean, it's been amazing to.
Team oriented.
You know, the fire departments come out and we've been in parks and we've worked flag situations and, you know, the street guys who come out and cut trees and, I mean, it's not this.
It's everybody, but Brad has been the leader of getting everything organized on that side and we, so.
Thank you.
You do, this is everybody, but you have taken a big leadership role. I appreciate it.
I appreciate you sitting on that moment, but I wish you didn't have to. Some drinks all around at the Oats Lodge later.
Yeah, so I'll kind of do a highlight through some things that have changed a little bit even since I did this, but uh. Uh, sewer and storm maintenance, we've kind of started that. Uh, about twenty blocks of sanitary, it's been televised already, a little more, we got a couple more blocks done today. Uh, about roughly forty blocks have actually been cleaned uh properly. Uh, we're, it's going slow, we're running into issues that have never been seen before because of the camera. So we've had to go back and hit lines two or three times, clean them out. There's, there's routes that we know we're gonna be there. It's just. A learning process, so now in the past, there's about thirty blocks that everyone knew you just kind of hit and then you went away. Well, you know, it's, we're trying to develop a program to get through it all. It's gonna take us a while. Um, there's gonna be things that probably in the future come to help us. Get this process done, but we're learning it. So um, on top of that, we've got some uh catch bases and storm lines cleaned too. Getting down through that, so as we're working through there, um, trying to get water flow this time of year, we're gonna get rain, so we need to start getting some of this stuff flowing, so. Um, big thing last been going on, so the UV and the skater work, uh, electric pump, uh, too, I worked with. At Atlantic for a long time, um, guys actually worked for Jetco, went over to electric pump. Um, they came in to help me with the UV system. The HMI screen went out, they called the black screen to death and just went out, so. Uh, we had no control over our UV system and it's the time to start UVing our, our effluent. Uh, so we had to put everything a manual in hand and run it and. You have no visual on it, so you're kind of hoping and praying things are working the way they're supposed to work. Um. Unfortunately, it's only about fifteen years old, but they don't make that stuff anymore, so that screen's obsolete. New HMI is about fifteen thousand plus, uh, the reprogramming fees and all that. Uh, Nick came down. He got into the back of the computer side of the screen, got to be able to pull the program out of our old one, found an old one that the screen was good. Measured it all together, made a new one work, um, and got new logic put in, in an older screen face to save us about ten thousand. So we got that back up and running, which showed we have about nine valves that are failed, they're about fifteen hundred dollars a piece. Um, so we've staggered all our bulbs, so at least water is getting hit by a bulb at some point now there, so. Um, our last three results have come back at one part per million for E coli, um. Which is wonderful. Actually, our last one was less than one part per millions what came back, so we're getting the job done. We're just on the verge of that system failing. So we're just, we're gonna, we got some parts, we're, we're slowly working on putting it there and we're just gonna slowly start. Building it back to where it was. It's just some maintenance that hadn't been done on it for years since it's been in. It's just, it's all kind of hitting at one time. Um, but while Nick was here, he kind of looked at our skater system that is pretty inoperable. Um. Half our plant doesn't run off the skater like it's supposed to. Half our plant is run by hand. Um, you, we got things that were bypassed to keep things running, got two clarifiers that are running at a hundred percent in a bypass mode right now because. The equipment needed to run it is not made anymore. It was made in nineteen eighty five. So without tearing it all down and fitting all new components in it, which would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're finding ways to make it work right now until we find a better solution. Um, just the skater side of it. Uh, Primex had looked at it a couple of years ago when Chris Day was here, they bought it about two hundred fifty thousand dollars just to upgrade the skater. That's a lot of money for something that, you know, if we go forward with a new plant, most of that would go away. So Nick came down and looked at it, out of the seven HMI screens that are there that aren't working properly. He found a way, he thinks he can take the two main HMI screens that make the whole plant run off, those two. And those two are in buildings that would stay with the plant upgrade, so this stuff would go on to the next plant. We wouldn't be wasting any money when we. We fix on this and try and figure out how to bypass the stuff. Um, then we'd be torn down in a couple, three years if we go forward with a new plant, so we're not throwing money at something that's gonna get torn out.
I didn't think it was a question if, I thought it was a question of just when, because I mean, we were gonna do. Few million dollars worth of upgrades, right? How many millions were the?
Twenty, well, we are gonna do twenty million.
We're still in the process, getting all that designed out, so you know, until I break ground, I'm not gonna say yeah.
But sooner, sooner the better.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we're gonna continue to have to Band-Aid this thing until we do.
Yeah, we're gonna get to a point where it, it's gonna fail to the point of it's gonna be big dollars to get it working and then have to tear, tear that part down.
And if I understand it correctly, no matter how much we Band-Aid this system, we'll never be able to meet the new requirements coming down.
No, we got a new requirement this year. We're in a test on copper. Um, and my limit on copper is point zero two two parts per million. Um, and we have point zero five five parts per million in our wells. So I'm already violating the permit, just pumping it into our system. Drinking water, copper doesn't matter, throwing it out to fish, it does, so. You're always required to take out, our system cannot reduce copper. Um, there is about a fourteen million dollar upgrade to our plant. To reduce copper. It's not cost effective to do that. Um, so yeah, the new plant would have the capabilities to reduce copper too and stuff like that, so. Uh, but we're in the, we're in the testing phase right now. That's a two year cycle with the EPA and the DNR, so we don't have to meet permit for the next two years. That's, they're showing what we have. This is what, they give us a number. This is what we'd like to see you at. We're gonna see where you're really at and then they'll set our limit based on what our capabilities are and that will be for the next permit and then going on, but. Um, that's just gonna be another tool with EPA, the DNR saying. This plant needs upgraded because we can never meet the requirements that are there already, so. Um, so yeah, that's kind of what's, but Nick's, Nick thinks he can do a lot. Um, they're still working on a, a quote to see what they can do to. Work on this plant knowing it has to work with a future plant too. We're not gonna spend money twice. That's what they're trying to work out, you know, and give us the best Band-Aid. Um, our water meter upgrades, um, as of right now, all the residential census meters have been replaced or installed up to date. Um, we're, we got just a handful of uh, commercial ones still to do with their schedule with plumbers to get things done, so we're on track there.
There were like almost sixty five that we've been paying for the other systems. So that's.
And there were four of them that were um, meters in places that.
Didn't need to be.
Couple houses are gonna get torn down. Um, the school, there was one up in the old school that's getting torn out, so we got lucky, we just had to pull them out and get rid of them, so. Um, should do that. Kind of already talked about full preparation. Um, April eighth to ninth, we got the cleaning completed on that. Um, with the assistance of some Chris, of Chris's guys, uh, we repainted the zero entry portion of the pool. So it's got brand new fresh coat paint on there. Um, Sean pulled the caulking kind of where that. Um, failure was last year, pulled the caulking out, we're recaulking that right now because it's gonna be fall before they can get. Here to, to work on that liner, but we think we can recaulke that, maybe save that, so it'll work. Um. And it took some guidelines from them and talking to it, so we're getting that recaulke, so we'll do that tomorrow. Um, some training stuff that we did, um, March twenty sixth, Chris, myself and Harry. Uh, we went to AWA region for water training to get our CEUs for our water licenses. That uh, was in Atlantic, had a pretty good time up there. Uh, that following Wednesday then was the IWEA region for wastewater training in Grissel. Uh, Harry, Aaron, Scott, myself, uh. Went to that to help the RCUs. Uh, I put on here Scott's preparing for his grade two wastewater exam. I'm proud to say he passed it on Thursday. Uh, so Scott's a grade two wastewater operator now. Um, Todd's preparing for both his water exams right now. Uh, we're waiting for a response from the DNR when they're gonna let him test and I'm gonna go back and throw my hat at the grade four again here real quick, so. Actually Thursday morning, but um, yeah, so we're gonna go see what the new test looks like and see what's going on there.
And then Aaron got his one too.
Yeah, yeah, Aaron and Harry got their, their ones there a little while back. Um, equipment updates, uh, jetter hose, we had to replace the jetter hose. Uh, the front of the jet truck, that hose lasted about five, six years, as was typical. We got ten years out of that hose, so. That was a really good thing. Um, it exploded on the guys while they were working, so it's twenty five hundred PSI, it, you know. Um, about eighty gallons a minute, it's not good for that to go, hose deteriorates over time.
How long is that hose?
Uh, the hose is six hundred feet. Um, so it should have been probably replaced four or five years ago. It was in good condition. I mean, it's just what you do, but. Like luckily it blew down in the hole, the hose came up, it got all the way, no one got hit with it, but um. It's a four or five years range, so we had to run it over to. Um, link in and get a hose put on it. Um. The CCTV camera trailer's been upgraded with some new video and controller logic, so um, had a little termination issue with it, so we went over there. Components, we kind of knew getting it over, you're gonna have to fix a few computers, uh, components in there, so why they had it tore apart. Why pay for that service twice? They already have it tore apart. Let's just get the units and get it fixed up. So we're running great. Um. We're working on getting a, a batten with going for prom. We got that and we're gonna go help paint that here shortly if they haven't done it all right. And we've got our, pretty much our first cut with the wells done, getting all the mowing done on that. Uh, we're scheduling our BFD drive to get put in, uh, so we can drop the tower here sometime late spring. And uh, run constant pressure to the town, so we can get that, get the tower painted on the inside, get the, the coating put on there and get that.
What's VFD stand for?
Uh, variable frequency drive. It just runs your average, it's up and down, so it tells you how much.
This is just an internal. Um, redo, clean, clean and. It's not the outside total rehab thing.
No, it's the inside, it's the inside liner, so we have to drop the tower. Um, they're going, they'll clean the inside of the water tower. They'll spray an epoxy to it. That takes forty eight hours to cure. Then we can bring it back up and then we can run the tower back, so in. In the meantime, we already have the VFD scheduled to go in. We just gotta get Scott there and once he puts the VFD in. We'll valve off the tower, we'll keep it full, we'll valve off the tower. We'll run a trial run for two or three days to make sure that our, our wells can. We'll run a trial run for two or three days to make sure that our our wells can maintain constant pressure throughout town and feed everybody water the way it's supposed to. And then when that happens, then we'll know we can do it. Then uh Iowa Roll Water and Viking and all them will come down. We'll set up some pressure relief valves in areas and we'll actually drop the tower down. They'll go in, they'll clean it, bring it down. So. If everything goes right, about seventy-two hours, we won't have a tower working, but our pumps should take care of everything. So.
People in town notice any difference in the water service?
Knock on wood. No one should ever notice except for, you know, everyone will be aware. So um, some will have to kind of advertise strong when we're getting ready to do it. Let the word be out just in case something would happen. You never know in a situation, this is the first time. I, you've never dropped a heavy press?
We've dropped it every once.
Once. Yeah, it'll be the second time in a long time since we dropped it. So. There's always something unforeseen that could happen. So yeah, we just. What's going on. So they lose pressure for a little bit of time. This is why I let us know so we can make sure things are taken care of. Um.
I assume everything went well last time you did it.
Sure. No, I did. We didn't have these drives. We had to man it twenty-four hours a day.
Oh, wow.
Just sat there and when the pressure went up, we shut wells off and on it.
It should be a lot nicer. So we'll still probably have to have a couple of guys. Monitoring it, but it'll be more just off the tablet than anything, just watching everything. But, um. That's kind of what we've got going on in a nutshell right now.
I want to back up to wastewater. When do we expect to see uh any kind of designs or preliminaries for the new plan? When do we expect to see anything?
Um, we have a real rough drawing came back about three months ago from JDL, but they had to go and do a bunch of stuff. So we're still waiting. Um, or Snyder, sorry. Um, I think the problem we're waiting on right now is that two people that are in charge of that project, project retired from Snyder. So they're transitioning into two new people. So they're getting their feet wet, making sure they know what they do.
Plus financing.
Is their design?
Our financing, I think financing is a concern right now because.
They haven't, nothing's been approved financing wise, which is gonna work on.
And is that gonna include engineers' cost estimates as well? Very good. So, and I appreciate everything you're doing there. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but. All you guys, I mean, you're doing such a great job. I mean, thank you so much for your hard work.
Yes, absolutely. And for working so well together. You guys are awesome.
I love to see that.
Yeah, it's nice. Very nice.
And I love your uniforms, your new shirts. Yay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. City administrator report.
Um, an update on, everybody knows that Highway thirty-four is coming back in construction mode. So I posted on Facebook that a week from tonight, a week from today. They will be shutting down the eastbound, westbound section of thirty-four, just west. Forty-eight. So as you're coming eastbound, you'll be able to turn on to forty-eight if you're coming. Uh, excuse me, westbound, you'll be able to turn on to forty-eight. If you're coming eastbound from Omaha, you'll have to go through the industrial park to get around. And that'll be closed for about two weeks. After that, they will then be ready to install the signalizing. And so when I ask for kind of an overall, when do you think you'll be done? The goal is that they will be completely done at the end of May. So hopefully then we'll be construction zone free. Uh, but if you can see, they're kind of approaching the intersection from the south side with their concrete work. Um, so.
It looks so nice though. Have we talked to them? And I I bring this up because of Brad. Um, also mentioning it, we used to do all the mowing of all of that out there. And so I don't know what the plan is. I know that um. We would like to not have to be dealing with the trees, right? Out in that little unsended drive. But what is the plan for, is the DOT gonna do replanting or what's the plan?
Talking about the trees on the east.
Well, I'm talking about replanting grass along the.
Well, they would have to plant the grass.
Okay.
Isn't the black, isn't it already planted? Like they have the.
No, they're, they're talking by the end of the week, they're going to start with the uh, they got, they got some grading to do and then they're gonna start with some reseeding of the. Of the ditches there.
Are they replacing the trees that they've cut down?
And that's the question. Are they replacing the trees that they cut down or no? So, yeah. It is too bad. I don't think Lisa saw it when there was actually trees along all the way.
I never heard of Red Oak Iowa when there were trees there. I just saw construction.
Yes, that is Clint's team that mows that. That's a huge job. Mowing the dike. Is a lot. That's hard.
Yeah, we, Darren Paul came back for Brad. And so Darren's gonna split time with us. He's gonna come back and mow the levee and and stuff like that since he's got some more time on.
Excellent. That's great. Cause he knows how, he knows how to position himself on that mower just right.
It's really easy. You don't get that tractor and do it. Cause if you look where the paint rubbed off, that's where your foot goes, your hand goes. If there's handholds that are just positioned in there still.
Scary.
Makes an experienced cat to mow the dike.
Uh, the next thing, urban renewal. So as you know, we're kind of in the middle of the process of approving the the Lorette's funeral homes and stuff. So two of the requirements were a meeting with planning and zoning, which I did this morning. And the other requirement is to invite the school and the county to come to a meeting. The school declined attending, but the county was there this morning. So I conducted all those which had to be done. Uh, in the case of P and Z before your public hearing at the next meeting. And in the case of the county and school, the last day to do that was today. So they came and were favorable to the project. Uh, Civic, our transition, our conversion is obviously super time consuming and everybody's putting in a lot of hours. So appreciate. Um, people's commitment at the, at the office to just being willing to be patient and working with it. It's working well. You know, it's just a big learning curve. Um, I think right now on the online portal, as I think I mentioned earlier, there's almost three hundred people that have registered in the online portal. We're gonna start pushing e-billing, emails, various things like that to try and again. Try to create less postcards that have to be pulled apart and mailed. Um, many people are continuing to pay the credit card fee, but there are people who are kind of churning around and going back and getting checks or cash. So they're choosing, you know, they're individual, or at least they might pay the first time they come in and have discussed trying to do something different. Uh, we approved the floodplain permit for Scott Wilson and the one oh six Washington. I think everybody knew was. Kind of on hold since November, but um I have issued them their floodplain permit. So they went through the process, even though it was a little bit painful. We got through it. They did a great job hiring McCourt. Was able to come back and they'll be doing some improvements to the building. Uh, and should be proceeding with that facility. So that's a good thing.
That's taken a lot of time and a lot of.
It's gonna be an army recruiting office.
Thank you for all the work you've put into helping figure out a solution for that because.
Well, they did the work, but it's just making sure that we, you know. Stay to the spirit of the law and try to help people work through that, even though it took longer than anybody would want it to. But hopefully now people know that's what we have to do and kind of get on board quicker.
We learn a lot.
Yep. Uh, I issued the third building permit for the townhomes. And so there's now three building permits issued. So that would be fifteen units. I mean, they did the one before the winter, did the other one when winter was about over and now we've done the third one. Um, and then also did some work in that ditch line, which we really didn't have time. I would have ideally wanted to come before the council for that, but we cleaned out the ditch. That starts over at Dollar General and cleared that out. Um, ironically, it rained the night that we got it done. Uh, we wanna do, um, most likely do the high B one. We'll actually take a little bit more time and bid that out. Uh, to anybody that wants to excavate that, but it's super important with all of the flooding issues that we have, that we make sure that our. Um, our areas of major water runoff that's coming from town and going out towards the levee that that was opened up. And so. It worked well. We just need to pay more attention to those um going forward. So we'll try to get some prices on the high B one, but we appreciate getting that first one done. I think they still have some more work to do.
Cleaned up the one behind middle of Christ or two.
Yes, that's it. That's what we're talking about. Starts at Dollar General, goes under. On that box cover that was under there, almost had three foot of sediment in there. So they're waiting for that to kind of scour out. They have to do some work, I think, getting on like some sort of. Small equipment in there. And then I think somebody will come and blow out the rest of it. But. Even just getting all that brush and I think in some cases almost a foot of sediment out will help. Making sure that what's on the east end of town moving to the west towards the levee is moving appropriately. So. Grab that son.
Are you guys a hundred percent on Civic now? Are you still doing both?
Uh, we don't really do both. It's like everything's sort of in a process. So like the first thing that went was cash receding. Like we sent out the bills and set in G-Works. On April one, and then we started receding right away. Now Donna's ramping up to like, today she downloaded all the meters. Um, penalties got downloaded. That's now all in Civic. The next bills that go out on May first will go out from the Civic system. The payroll, Suzie duplicated the payroll. So she did the last payroll starting two weeks ago. She did that payroll in G-Works, then replicated it in Civic to make sure that it was identical. And then today's payroll. Is strictly in Civic. So that's like another domino.
That's the big, that's the biggest part.
That's a big one.
Hmm, they're all pretty big.
They're all big.
Um, cash receiving's going well. That's one that we started first. Um, bank rack, we're trying to finish up. Um, again, um, Sue and Ashley were working on it and then, um, just. It's just hard for newer people to be able to get it done pretty expediently. And so I've hired. Uh, Cindy Kendall, who I let you know before was helping us. She's the retired person from Marshalltown. So we're hoping that she can get us caught up. And then to John's point of not getting these reports, we'll be able to get you the reports. We'll be caught up and then we can convert over. The goal is May ninth, that we convert. Bank rec over to Civic and it's kind of hard to do that if things are so far behind.
And and by then we should have a bottom line on our funds.
Once we get, whether it's in G-Works or in Civic, yes, once we get bankrupt caught up. So we're in December right now, starting with July.
And we've identified and located all of them at this point.
It's just more of a like, it's just process. There's just things that people. Did for twenty years and then left variably abruptly and didn't really train people on how to do. So people thought they were doing. The right stuff and weren't necessarily doing it, or some stuff was getting duplicated, like in the payroll system. Um. And so general ledger, we're actually gonna be closed Wednesday morning because everybody touches general ledger. So whether you're. Taking utility billing into the ledger, payroll into the ledger, everything. And so everybody needs to be able to concentrate. So we po, we will post tomorrow. It will be closed in the morning on Wednesday. Um, there's also a half a day of general ledger training on Thursday. We'll wait and see if everybody needs to participate in that. I don't know how it's gonna go. Um, but it's just super difficult. Like if Donna's training, we literally have, we switched her. Blind that used to be on the outside of the window. So she couldn't just like get a call from Civic and pull the blind down. So we had the guys come and move the. Blind under the inside of her window because it sounds silly, but if she's talking on the phone, like people don't leave you alone. So we've opened up the door. We're trying to encourage people to come in by Karen. Um, so between the two of them, it's, you know, Ashley's answering the phone and. I entered payments this morning. And so it's just trying to get everybody that's normally dealing at the front counter to be able to concentrate on what they're doing. And they need to be able to do it at their workstation. So that's hard when you, you know, you can't just ship them off to the back and train when it's not their computer. So. Uh, we're managing, but it's definitely caddic and everybody's putting in extra hours and that's appreciated. So.
When do you feel like that'll be done?
Um, I would say sometime in June. With everything.
Next fiscal year.
Well, I know you've been putting in a bunch of hours. I know the other staff at the office have as well. I mean. I'm, I appreciate all the hard work you're doing, but I I hate to see you have to put in all those extra hours. It's just like.
We knew this was gonna be a very big challenge and I'm just glad she's the one helping us get this done.
Everybody knows though, like it it's hard, but everybody sees like the light at the end of the tunnel that is so much better. Like there's just so many things that. You don't have to do manually anymore or that are super antiquated and it's reports. And so you don't. You can change something or ask for, you know, just even your reports for the bills. Like we can make them look however we want. It isn't just like, here's your boilerplate report and that's what you get. If people want to see something different, where you put things, it's, it'll be a lot harder. It's just time.
It was like Lotus. Yes. It was horrible. It was horrible.
Not many people that get that reference. Yeah, that's old school.
Yeah, you're right. Probably not very many people get that reference, especially young people.
And I'm also working, um, I haven't started thinking too much about the cleanup yet. I'm thinking June first is when we'll start the garbage. I don't know that I'll put it on for May first, just without being there first bill. But June first, I think we'll start collecting the four dollars. And then, um. Right now I'm working on the garbage hauler permit application since that will now be in effect. And then we'll start working on the how we're gonna manage the cleanup, which I think should be a drop off the first time. I just want to make sure that we do that well. And then we'll see if we eventually can do a curbside, but I think we want to do drop offs first.
Oh, okay.
Just because it's cheaper. Okay.
You know where you're gonna do that?
We're working on it.
People are asking me, are we doing a sprint plan? They thought we weren't gonna do it, you know?
Well, you just don't want to do it and have it fail. So we gotta.
We gotta do it, right?
So hopefully we could do it like in June maybe. Fall of summer. But yes.
Anything else?
I'm getting my pile ready.
You are? Good job. Your forty-eight dollars worth of a pile.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I am.
All right. Um, mayor's report, I guess. I just want to send my condolences to the family of Curtis White, our veterans administrator. Director. I had no idea he passed away on April third. So we've been working together on the Home Based Iowa, trying to restart. The benefits of using that program and how we can use that to help attract veterans to come live in Red Oak. And. Um, I did have a call with Mike Olson yesterday and talked about what their plan is. Um. It sounds like they've got potential applicant coming in fairly soon. That probably wouldn't start until June, but um. So that's sad. Um, I've got an Iowa Mayor's Association Executive Meeting Wednesday. I have an Iowa League of Cities meeting on Thursday. We have leadership for Red Oak on Thursday. And let's see, I have done, I read to two and three-year-olds a couple of books the other day. And then I had a meeting with ARPA because the Iowa Association of Retired People. Is working diligently on two bills before the legislature on accessory dwelling units.
Wait, ARPA or AARP?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. AARP. I'm sorry. AARP. AARP. Sorry. AARP. Um, and you know, I appreciate that they're doing this because it's looking at how you can add an accessory dwelling unit, a smaller home. Onto a property and make it legally by like legally possible. So. Um, they had a meeting with the League of Cities Board. So we talked through the legislation that they're looking at. And we worked through some of the concerns that the league board members had, which are city administrators and. Other people who tend to not be as excited about those types of things because of tax purposes. And. So I think they're making some good progress. Um, I just want to thank Lisa and everybody for my birthday lunch. Thank you. That was very sweet of you all. And then, um, I was supposed to speak at the housing, what do they call it? The collaborate, the collaborative housing symposium. And I passed that on to Brian. I did, however, put slides together for that, which we included in your packet. And I asked Lisa to put them in there because. It's impressive, you guys, the amount of work that we have accomplished in two and a half, three years. Um, we've completed the uh rural housing readiness assessment. We did that mostly in twenty twenty-two. Um, we got the report in the beginning of January twenty twenty-three. We had uh five main priorities, which were infrastructure, leadership, education awareness, commercial and cultural vitality and inventory. And then as a result of all of that, we came out with three main work groups, which I feel like we need to maybe kind of look at bringing them back together. But it's housing development, finance, city leadership and action planning and community development and outreach. And then as a result of that grant, we received ten thousand dollars in in cash. For us to use where we purchased the equipment, the tool checkout program, which is our library of things. Where you can check out tools from the public library. Um, overall, they just wanted to know what lessons learned. We talked about the new development. Uh, with the Studio Ones and all the pieces that went into that. We looked at the first phase of of Studio One's gonna be the thirty-three units, four and five unit complexes on slab. Um, we talked about the phase two to follow. And when I talked to them. The other day, they said the first three buildings, our first three slabs, so the first fifteen, those will be done. Before September, then they're gonna have the ones on the west side of the street. There'll be one done in September, one done in October. No, October, November and December. They'll have those three. So that will complete thirty-three units hopefully by the end of December. Um, if they can't get that one in December, it'll be in the spring, April twenty twenty-six. But those first thirty-three, they're planning to be done. By the spring of twenty-six.
Do you know what those are gonna, you know, for?
Um, it'll probably be between twelve and fifteen hundred a month.
And they're all one bedrooms, the new ones?
There, most of them are two bedroom.
Two bed.
One bath, one car garage, maintenance free. Yep.
How many square feet are they?
They're about eleven hundred or so, eleven hundred square feet. Um, and then phase two, when we talked, um, they are still thinking about potentially, because those will be, there will be. Three fourplex units on slab. There will be eight walkout duplex units. Um, and they did talk about whether they would have those for sale as opposed to for lease. And that'd be a new design. They've not done a walkout basement with anything. And that'd be a new design, they've not done a walkout basement with anything.
What's the timeline for that again?
So those, they hope to be finished, depending on financing, they hope to get all of the, that second phase done, which would be twenty-six total units by, between twenty-six and twenty-eight. Then we talked about, and I just shared pictures, we talked about what they're gonna look like, we shared the middle school, you know, and the twenty-five units that that ended up being a seven year project. Um, as far as the city leadership and action planning, we have, we have demoed fifteen dangerous and dilapidated properties. We're in, we were fifteen and twenty-three, we're looking to do what, three or four here this year? So we're gonna hit on almost twenty in the last couple of years. And half of those were paid, I mean, they were paid half by SWIPCO, by their demo program.
It's a federal program, is it not?
Well, it's a federal program that gives SWIPCO the funds to use, not all of the council of governments have that program, MAPA did not have that program. Um, and then just looking at what lots we have that are now available, and then under city leadership and action planning also, the mandatory garbage or cleanup days. Um, we touched on that, also the ordinance recodifications, or recodifying everything. And we updated our property maintenance and building codes. We have um process defined for legal and administrative municipal infractions on the tax rolls in the set off program for our rental inspection program. Um, and ordinances if you're not licensed. Um, let's see, vacant building registry, we've talked about that as a part of the downtown assessment. And then extending the urban renewal area for future housing development, which we talked a little bit about today. That housing area out there, we're pulling out the funeral home, and then we're putting it back in, but the rest of the area would need to be defined as an urban renewal area again, cause it's gonna expire here in the next six months or so. So I think the plan was to do several phases of housing in that area that Marty and Larry own still. Um, also looking at the community catalyst, we got the community catalyst grant for the first time. Um, and then the city also agreed to contribute a hundred thousand, that's significant, that's gonna be almost a million dollar project of the building downtown where J Merck is located currently. And I listed, you know, the work that Acorn Development's doing on community development outreach, and also the school with the the school, the leader, uh the chamber and um Southwest Community College with this, the trade home. Um, so and then also the redevelopment of the trailer park. So that's gonna be seventy new rent owned trailers, and I don't know if you've driven through there, but it is looking a lot nicer. Um, and then other initiatives, you know, the nineteen million dollars for the market rate housing for the child, Charles E. Lakin, um field of interest funds. The historic neighborhood districts that um Cease talked about today, upper story housing as a part of the downtown assessment. Um incentives and then rehabilitation and and new development in the downtown. When you look at other communities where people are buying property, their most valuable properties are around the downtown. And those are our least valuable in many cases, and so that redevelopment effort, which is gonna start with flood, reducing the flood plain. Um, but that and this historic district are really gonna add value to our property values.
Where did that statistic come from?
Which one?
The one about most valuable properties being around the downtown?
Well, that's the, that, I don't have a statistic for you, but.
Because that doesn't even make sense in my mind.
Historic preservation of downtown historic homes tend to make them, yeah.
That'd be in bigger cities.
Yep, um, and then infrastructure to support this, like the fiber optic broadband coming in, the levy and our cleanup efforts. And then our flood mitigation and pump station, which, you know, we've done the study and we re-updated the study, we've had the levy certification. There's just a lot that go into all of this, it's all interconnected, so. I heard Brian did a great job delivering, what, how was the conference?
I'll go last.
You're gonna go last, okay, that's all I have. So let's see, who wants to go?
I'll go, I did nothing. Don, you're next.
Nothing.
Yeah, I did a little more than nothing. Uh, at the library board meeting and M C D Z board meeting, and then I went to the conference board budget meeting for the mayor, so.
Oh, yes, thank you for the conference board meeting, yes, yes.
I had um hospital auxiliary board meeting and our hundred and ten first re-crowd just this year. We did, and uh we're in working on the cemetery block for eighteen twenty-seven, right? Um, also, we finished the remodeling of the country park. And tonight is uh, they're having a dinner for a hundred of the donors um from the Y. So, we're excited about that, we have to go out and see it, because it's.
When will it be open to the public again, or is it?
Go out, the bars open, um, and new carpet, the kitchen's all new. Paint, light fixtures, we have furniture in there, you can sit and put the fireplace now. We're getting gas inserted, it's really nice.
Great, thank you for your work on that.
We've certainly still looking for a shop, so.
Okay.
But we have food trucks on Wednesday nights, so you can go out and take food.
Okay. Thank you, so you're next, Brian?
Okay, so I'll make a brief, I attended the two county commission meetings, and then I I did the sym- symposium for the mayor. And I'll, I'll just go over that briefly. I felt bad that the mayor didn't get to go, because a lot of the work that was done on this is a result of our heart. When I was sitting there, uh sitting there, doing the presentation, part of the panel, you know, a couple of things occurred to me, you know, one thing is, the first thing that occurred to me was it really doesn't take that much to make something happen. But you have to have a vision, and you have to, you know, uh, you have to have partnerships, you have to partner with people to make things happen. And they have to, you know, persevere, it takes, it takes some effort to make things happen, and you're gonna come across obstacles. But the thing that really struck me, that kind of, it kind of, you know, uh shocks me a little bit is forward momentum and progress in a community is very fragile, I mean, you're one election away from going backwards. And so that being said, uh, I think it's important that we just keep focused on the future. And no, no matter who's sitting up there in these chairs, but once again, it just struck me how fragile progress can be in a community our size.
Brian, I have to ask you and have told everybody too, what you told me about how our community, you thought outshone the other.
Oh, oh, no, so, you know, once again, three years ago, I sat in the same audience as a participant in the conference, and I was just trying to wrap my head around how in the world we're ever gonna get any housing starts, and how we're gonna overcome this obstacle and overcome that, and three years later, here we are. And and that's, and I guess that's why it struck me as being so fragile, because you can make progress pretty rapidly if you have partnerships and you have a vision. But, you know, those things can just evaporate overnight, if you lose those partnerships and you lose that vision, I mean, just gone, so.
And leadership.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, you know, that's part of the partnerships. Anyway, I'll say no more.
Were the other communities, cause you were on a panel.
Yeah.
And how did they, they, they talked about a little bit.
We were the shining stars of of this symposium, Red Oak is is on the map, we've been on the map at the state level for a while, but but we're really making uh a splash with people, and people are paying attention to what we got with the housing initiatives in our community right now. Pretty impressive, a community our size with a hundred and fifty-seven new housing starts, so.
And they just published uh an interview they had with me a while back, that was before this, but it's, I think we shared it, it's on our Facebook page. So that's a nice article, also just had an interview with a gentleman who's writing an article about our community heart and soul, and that's coming out next.
Well, that was part of what I presented there too, you know, I talked about, when I talk about partnerships, it's not just about partnerships with the city and the builder. It's about partnerships with the whole community, community heart and soul, and uh our, you know, comprehensive plan and all the, all the, you know, the rag bribe thing, I mean, that's all part of it as well, I mean, just all the community involvement, the partnerships, that's the, that's the key. In my opinion.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no, it was, it was a pleasure.
Awesome, do I have any upcoming things to add to the agenda, items for the agenda? Yeah, got it. All right, with that being said, I adjourn this meeting at, what is the time it is?
Eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven.